We will start the start the county commission meeting in three minutes. Today, August 5th, regular meeting of the Stark County Commission to order. It is nine twelve AM. We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good to see all the smiling faces this morning in the room. So we'll start by ratifying the agenda. You have received the agenda. Any comments, questions, additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Claris.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Franchuk. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. You have the minutes in front of you. We'll deal with the July 1st minutes first. Comments, questions, corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the July 1 meeting minutes.
By Commissioner Claris. We have a second.
A second.
By Commissioner White. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We will move on to the July 15th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 15, 2025 minutes.
Commissioner Franchuk.
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Claris. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the July 15th minutes as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the accounts payable. You have the accounts payable submitted. Had a chance to review. Comment?
Can I ask a question? There's that $5,000 park board Rough Rider Commission item on there. Lisa had questioned that before. Did she leave? Does she want that one paid? Now, she questioned me beforehand about not paying it. But I'm assuming because you approved that $20,000, then that should be paid. I just want that you be aware of that.
We did not approve the $5,085. That wasn't part of the approval, the $5,085?
Okay. So then, so-
Pull that out and then it'll be up in a follow-up motion with the actions by the park.
Okay, however you want to prove it. I just want you to aware of that. It's on there.
Okay. Make the motion to approve bills minus the $5,085 for the park.
Aye, Commissioner White.
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Claris. Any other questions? Hearing none. Do roll call vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Park Board Commission items, Mr. Marsh. Do you want me to-
Why hand it over to you? Okay, so we had three items that came up. We approved for the general fund, $60,820.52, which we're going to do these individually.
Yeah, please.
So I guess I would make a motion to pay that out of the general fund.
Aye, Commissioner Marsh.
I'll second.
By Commissioner White. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
The second item we had was the playground equipment for the lakes, whatever the park out there.
Lakeview.
Lakeview. I was going to say Lakeside, Lakeview Park. That amount came to $50,693.80, and I would make that motion.
Aye, Commissioner Marsh.
I would second that.
By Commissioner Claris. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
And the third item we had here for the Rough Rider Commission, additional $20,000 to help with this last year's Rough Rider days. I would make that motion that we would give them that support.
By Commissioner Marsh. Second.
Aye.
By Commissioner White. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
Do you want this back or this is mine?
Yeah, I would give it to Karen. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda. We have some years of service recognition certificates. I don't know if everyone is in the room this morning. We'll start with Lynn Welk for 10 years. Is the sheriff here? You want to present that? Lynn is not here, but you will present. Yeah. Okay. The next certificate we have is James Steyer for, on five-year anniversary. Todd and Randy, you want to- Thank you. And the last certificate we have this morning for five years is Anthony Awender, Anwendy Awonder. With the sheriff's department.
That went by fast.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone, for hanging with us and trying to make a career with Stark County. The next item we have is our Spirit of Excellence Award. Julie?
I'm not supposed to touch this, right? Can you hear okay if I, is it okay?
Can hear you.
Okay, just want to make sure. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Julie Obergewich, Coordinator with the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award. I coordinate also with the Stark County Sheriff's Office, so thank you for your support. And on June 4th, we had the opportunity to celebrate a true family of service in Stark County. A family who has given more than 142 years of combined service to southwestern North Dakota. And this was our 17th award presentation that we have presented since beginning the award presentation in 2021. The nomination was submitted by Kelsey Heidecker. She is a nurse with CHI St. Alexia's Health. It was a very lengthy submission, therefore I am going to paraphrase it a bit. However, I do know that it is in your pockets as well. For over 100 years combined, Dave, Sue, Corey, DJ and Jason Wallace have dedicated their lives to serving and protecting the Stark County communities through their extraordinary work in EMS and law enforcement. Their collective service represents more than just a career. They are an embodiment of commitment, service and excellence, having answered over 21,000 EMS calls and countless law enforcement emergencies. Their work goes far beyond responding to calls. It is a lifelong dedication to the safety, health and well-being of every person they serve. With every call answered, they have not only provided emergency care and assistance, but have also built a legacy of trust and respect within the community. In addition to the extraordinary frontline services, the Wallaces are renowned for their leadership and education and mentorship. They have served as mentors to many individuals entering EMS and law enforcement, passing on the wealth of knowledge and ensuring the next generation of emergency responders has the skills and values needed to succeed. They've also been integral in the development of training programs that bridge the gap between law enforcement and EMS, fostering collaboration and improving overall response times and outcomes in the community. Throughout their careers, the Wallaces have faced numerous challenges from the ever-present demands of emergency response to the personal sacrifices made to serve their community. Yet, they have consistently demonstrated resilience and dedication, not only in the face of adversity, but as leaders who have, who have to help others navigate in the same challenges. What makes Dave, Sue, Corey, DJ and Jason Wallace truly remarkable is not just their technical expertise or extensive experience, but their unshakable integrity, humility and commitment to the community. Dave, Sue, Corey, DJ and Jason Wallace are more than deserving of the Stark County Spirit of Excellence Award. They have exemplified the highest standards of service, compassion and dedication, making them true heroes within our community and beyond. And at this time, I would like to ask Dave and Sue Wallace to come forward, please.
Thank you. On behalf of our family, it's been an honor to serve the citizens of Stark County, southwest North Dakota, and even throughout part of the state. It was an honor. It was a surprise to us. But we do take it with a heart, knowing that, well, 100-
I don't know. A long time.
A long time. With that, we do thank you. We thank for the recognition and as Susanna and I go off into later part in life, we still have our kids, are going to continue on that commitment to the citizens of Dickinson and Stark County. We thank you.
Thank you.
So their presentation was a surprise to them. However, we did have to tell Corey, and this was the very first time in the 17 times that we've done the award presentation that we actually had to tell someone prior to, considering it was such a large family. I couldn't take the chance of someone like planning a trip or something and being gone, and then it's shot. So then we had to reschedule. So anyway, thank you for attending. We had tons of people in attendance. The room was full of love, full of love for them. Oh, shoot. I don't want to touch it. I'll just hold it. August 15th, or excuse me, October 15th is our next deadline. We do hold the nominations for up to 12 months. They are selected blindly with all the names removed, and they are selected by the Stark County mayors. In the 17 awards that we've done, I just want to briefly mention the variety of people that we have celebrated. They have been, they range from community leaders. We've had two teenagers. We had a fire chief. We've had several veterans. We've had emergency professionals and just everyday people going above and beyond, doing extraordinary things. So there's a lot of really good people in Stark County, and it is a privilege for myself and for the Sheriff's Office to, to present and to celebrate them with the community. We have had recipients in every town in Stark County except one, and that town is Taylor. So if anyone is from Taylor and would like to submit several, that would be great. They will be entered in with the rest of the batch for when they're reviewed on October 15th. Stark County Sheriff's Office, their website, you can submit nominations. And yeah, as always, thank you guys for your time. I really appreciate your support. I appreciate the support of the entire county because being there in the room to see how happy these individuals are who received the award makes everything just so worth it. So I just want to thank everyone for that as well. This is going to fall. I'm not going to hold that.
You're the designated mic holder there. Okay. Let's do it during the, yeah. Because the sheriff's loud enough. I don't know that he needs a mic. But we have a 9:30 public hearing, but we will take the sheriff's report. Sheriff Lee?
Make it quick. In front of you have the July report for the Stark County Sheriff's Office. Couple of things I'll touch on with that report. Within the 15 K-9 usages there, obviously one of those was the Richardson event. And that was our new K-9, Cato, performed very well with this handler in that event and helped us bring that to a conclusion. In addition to that, Cato has a couple of cocaine fines this month, and I just want to bring that up because cocaine is very rampant in our community right now, extremely. Bypassing fentanyl even, which was obviously very popular and still is, but cocaine is the trend right now, so dealing with that quite a bit. We have our events in Bellfield and Richardson this month, Little Opryland Days, and then Harvest Hoedown over in Bellfield. And again, to touch on that Richardson incident, I just want to thank and commend the agencies that helped us out. Southwest Tactical Team, the Narcotics Task Force, BCI and State Patrol that all made that successful incident. It could have went a lot worse, that's for sure. So again, it's always nice to work together well with all those agencies and people there, and it was a large success. I wanted to touch on a little bit the speed limit change on I-94. I did a little experiment on my way back from Bismarck on Sunday morning. I set my cruise at 81 miles per hour, and I usually, I shouldn't admit this publicly, but I usually set my cruise at 79 when I'm going back and forth to Bismarck, my personal vehicle. And you know, you'll have one or two people pass you periodically at 79 miles per hour. At 81 miles per hour is being passed by five and 10 people at a time. So our legislature, in their infinite wisdom of changing that to 80 miles an hour, I just, I don't agree with that. And now we obviously have people going 85, 86, 87 and more on a regular basis, obviously, like they were Sunday morning. Maybe that's not going to be a huge issue in the summertime, but when it comes to the winter travel, I think we're going to see a lot of issues. You know, I find it a little interesting that we're putting all this money in Division Zero, which is a good program, and then we raise our speed limit to 80 miles an hour. But anyway, I will be proposing some legislation in the next session that has to do with school resource officers and that funding coming out of the Common Schools Trust Fund. So obviously, we have two school resource officers in Stark County that are paid for by the taxpayers. I'm going to introduce legislation that would have that come out of that fund based on population. So not only would that help counties like ours, it would help smaller counties be able to ascertain an SRO that would no, would not be able to afford it otherwise. And within that legislation, I'm going to either propose within that bill or a separate bill, it'll probably have to be a separate bill, to raise the fines on the interstate for speeding, just the interstate. And you will see that in doing this for 20-some years, I can tell you definitively that most of the people that get cited on the interstate are not from North Dakota. It's probably 5149 in my dealings anyway, as far as who's getting cited. So a lot of that money from those increased fines could, let me back up. I think most people don't know this, but when we write a ticket in Stark County or as a highway patrol officer, that money goes to the Common Schools Trust Fund. It doesn't stay with our agency. It doesn't stay in Stark County. It goes directly to the Common Schools Trust Fund, which has, correct me if I'm wrong, nearly like $8 billion in it. This money would obviously go to that same fund and help fund the program to have SROs around the state of North Dakota. So something we're going to propose, and hopefully we can have some success with that and help keep our children safe in the state. Beyond that, we have our new position open. Like I said, Lynn is moving to Fargo with her family. Both her kids have graduated and are going to NDSU, so Lynn is following them there. Her boyfriend already has a well-paying job over in the area, so congrats to them and good luck to her. On the first day, and I think this is a testament to both you guys as a commission and us as a sheriff's department, on the first day we had that position open, we had 20 applicants on day one. I think we're somewhere around 40 now. I don't know if Gillette is in here, but. So thank you guys for that, and thank you to our staff for making it an attractive place to work. So, any questions?
So what is the new fine schedule for the 80 mile an hour? That might be interesting for people to know.
It really, it's changed a little bit. I don't have the exact numbers, Commissioner Messer, but it's not anything impressive or-
I thought it was five bucks per mile an hour.
Is that a lot?
Well, 10 miles, that's 50, if you're going, yeah. I, well, it's a heck of a lot more than they're currently paying, but nothing anywhere close to Minnesota. You're right.
The first four miles an hour over is $20, and then jumps $5 per mile per hour after that. Then also then the speed limit's going to be reduced to 70 in the Dickinson area, correct, on the interstate?
Yeah, I believe all the cities along the interstate are going to have a reduced miles per hour, which is nice. That's one nice thing they did with that, and it kind of creates speed traps in certain areas. But it is a good thing with people getting off and on the interstate, obviously.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. Okay, it is 9:30. We have a posted public hearing for a section line closure. Andrew, you want to start with that?
Not going to work. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Hopefully you can hear me okay.
We'll put you on the chair.
This is a section line closure as part of the Michael subdivision that we have submitted, and that is also on your agenda tonight. As part of that subdivision, requesting that a portion of the section line be vacated along the northern side of that property. There's actually a few reasons in century code that you can vacate section lines. If alternate routes have been provided and if natural conditions do not allow access through that area, there is a portion of century code that allows you to request a vacation for a section line. I can just hold it too. Yeah, that's fine. So as part of this, the Green River actually follows just west of this subdivision, just west of the vacation that we're requesting. And then there is a structure that is not actually in the Michael property, but does fall on the center of the section line. So travel is not currently available on the section line. Highway 10 does provide access just 100 feet or so north of this section line. So that is the request, is to vacate that section line through this property. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those as well.
Any questions for Mr. Shrank? Perfect, thank you. I guess the, the only comment I have is section line right of ways are, you know, tough to get back once you give them up. And historically, you know, I've seen them where we as a county, before even I was involved, have been very resistant to section line closures. And I get it. I live out there, so I know Mr. Michael's property there. It is kind of a section line to nowhere, but on the other hand, what is the access to that little brown building that is being? I mean, I know there was a location issue with that, so what's, what's the issue?
Mr. Messer, so as part of the subdivision plat, we have a 40-foot access easement along the north side of that property. There's two lots in the subdivision that would gain access from that, and then that would also provide access to Mr. Hendrickson property to the west. I can appreciate your concerns with, with closing section lines. I do understand where you're coming from on that. However, it's extremely unlikely with the Green River there that anything would happen in this location. And Highway 10 has been there for many, many years. That provides access just 100 feet away. So the likelihood that you would ever want to or need this right of way is very, very slim. So I think your risk is fairly limited in this, in this location.
So you're proposing the easement over a vacant, what would be proposed, the vacated, no?
No, it's just slightly north of there, and I suppose you don't have a copy of the plat in front of you now, but.
Yeah, all I have is this, so.
If I could, I can show you, just hand you a map here that shows.
Thank you.
So on that map, there's lots one and two at the very top. You can see the section line cuts about through the center of those two lots. That's the section line that we're requesting to be vacated. You can see the structure just outside the property that sits in that section line. There's actually a second structure just east of the subdivision road that sits in that section line, so it's not traversable today. The easement is that shaded area on the north side of lots one and two. That would be the easement that we're providing to Mr. Hendrickson property on the west.
So that's a public easement?
It would be a private access easement privately maintained by the HOA that's being established as part of the Michael subdivision.
So is that only for people who own property within the subdivision, or is it?
It is for the benefits of those two lots, as well as Mr. Hendrickson, who owns the property to the west.
So the easement is right on the, right adjacent to the county line?
County right of way, correct. Yep, for Highway 10, correct.
Road Department have any comment on this?
So before he gets up there, the little square out is Mr. Hendrickson's property?
At the northwest corner, correct. Yep, yep.
But to the west of that is someone else's property?
It's Michael, do you know their name? Dale Michael?
Got it.
It is not this developer. It's a different Michael, so.
Todd Miller, Road Operations Specialist, Stark County Road Department. As far as vacating that section line, I'd have no issues whatsoever. And just as long as that new easement that they're proposing would stay off the right of way of the Highway 10, which is like 100 feet setback through there, or maybe a little bit more, but.
Is the 40-foot sufficient?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So we just do one public hearing on this, Amanda? I just want to make sure it's noticed properly.
Oh yeah, this is come down all the way down there.
Okay.
Yeah, it says, "After public hearing and a finding by the Commissioners of public benefit, may close section lines or portions thereof."
Okay, so one meeting is sufficient. Okay. What are your wishes?
You have to open the public hearing, right?
We did, I thought.
This is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing, so. Any comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? I guess I got to do it three times. Any comments from the public? If not, I will close the public hearing on the section line closure as proposed. Now, what are your comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the section line closure that's proposed.
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Franchuk and Commissioner Claris. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Want your map back? Okay, we'll go to the County Road Engineers.
Neil, can we take like a five-minute break so he can, our system isn't working?
So that'll work rather than the break. We'll, we'll take one right now.
Thank you.
We'll call you back at about 9:48 exactly. Till you're- All right, we'll bring up the County Road Report first. Todd?
Good morning, everyone. Todd Miller, Stark County Road Department, Road Operations Specialist. Got a report for, for our road crew operations. We've been hauling material and with gravel and shale. Shale, we did 16 miles and hauled 30,284 yards already this year. We're in a move-
Um, we're in a move to a different location now, south of uh Gladstone. Um, we're, we've hauled gravel fourteen point two miles and did twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven yards of gravel as well. Um, blading roads when necessary or when needed. And with the rain, we'll probably be out today a little bit in some areas that were, got a little moisture or if the road tore up or something, but. Usually when these hard rains hit, uh, they do a better job with blading. It's just comes down fast and sheds off, so. Um, culvert replacement, uh, if you have that slide, you can put that up. Um, we had a culvert on Stark County and Billings County line on one hundred and thirty-second avenue southwest, south of Bell Field. Um, it's, was washed out, I have on there as repaired, but um it will be repaired. We're still on hold, can't get in there, um, but anyway, that will be done soon as weather permitting. Far as projects are concerned, uh, one hundred and thirty-first avenue southwest is uh under construction, south of Bell Field now. With uh Livichak Construction working there, um, Forty-Eighth Street, uh, southwest, construction is complete now. The fences are all back up, ground seeded, and that project is complete. Um, West Broadway project, which is coming up here in September, uh, Northern improvement at the bid, um, we had pre-construction meeting. Um, it'll be in September of uh, September twenty-second. That they figure they'll be starting and if something comes up where they can start earlier, they will. South Heart Bridge replacement started in July and still on hold due to high water and as of, they were gonna start here. Either tomorrow or the next day, but I think after today's rain, that's gonna be put off again as well. Um, they would've got it done earlier, but we had to, we couldn't ship the box culvert from Rapid City. Because of the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally, they don't allow wide loads, so that had to stay there for, for that period of time.
So how come sometimes you'll have combiners coming through there?
Exempt, probably?
Really?
Yep. That'd be my, would probably be the right thing for that, yeah. The other thing is uh Hundred and Tenth and Thirty-third Avenue Southwest, um, start date is mid-September. Um, we're gonna start removing the fence here soon and getting the fencer out there and he'll do that. Um, also, um, James Kaderman was here earlier with Interstate Engineering about the bridge removal. On the old Highway eighty-five bridge, the DOT has given us approval not to bid that out and do the work ourselves. So we can start that whenever we want, so that'll probably be happening soon as well. And the last uh project I got is the Grant County Bridge Project, our pipe came in today. We were gonna deliver them out on the location, but can't get to the location, so we have a drop-off site near Antelope. And uh area farmer there is gonna unload them for us and he'll load them, load us back up for, so he's gonna help us out on that, so that's great. Um, other than that, that's all I have. If you have any questions about the Road Department, go right ahead.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, Nicole, you wanna come up with uh? Northern Plains?
Uh, Nicole Kilby, Northern Plains Engineering, um, a couple of brief updates for you, I think Todd covered some already, but. Um, first, Thirty-second Hundred Seventh, uh, they did do that seal coat earlier this summer out there, um, we're just reviewing. Um, some final documents, we'll probably have a pay estimate for the next meeting, that'll wrap up that project. Um, but all the construction is complete with that one, just working on some final documents in our office. Like Todd said, the Hundred Thirty-first Avenue, uh, south of Bell Field, uh, Hlebichak is working on that one. Um, they're moving along as they can, the rain isn't helping them any outs, out there either, there's a lot of water out there, so. Um, they're doing what they can out there, uh, they'll keep moving forward, they do a lot of good work. Design projects are bid now, but the Thirty-third Street Hundred Tenth Avenue, like Todd said, uh, Martin Construction was awarded that job. They are expecting it to get started in September. And then we will continue working with um. On the flex application fundings with Mr. Miller, as far as those come, those gonna be in about middle of September, so we're. Kinda narrowing down the selections on those and we'll get the applications and maps and all that kinda stuff put together and hopefully we'll have some success with that like we did last year.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, Mr. Freilich, Extension Service, new employee introduction.
Good morning Commissioners, Kurt Freilich, NDSU Extension Agent, Stark Billings County. Um, we have a new staff member that joined us June sixteenth, uh, I'd like to introduce her. Uh, if you, Deb Thire was with the Parent Resource Center and the Parent Educator, she had retired. Um, our, the new individual is right behind me, Sophia Vanette. I'll ask Sophia to come to the mic and she can introduce herself and uh give you a little brief update.
Good morning Commissioners, as Kurt said, my name is Sophia Vanette. Um, I took over as the um NDSU Extension Parent Educator for Region Eight. So I'll be serving um the eight counties in Region Eight, Adams, Billings, Bowman, Dunn, Heading, Aragon Valley, and Stark and Slope. Um, so I'm excited to get to meet you all, get to work with you all and get to working, um, yeah, so. We've just been working on getting to know everything and getting to know what parents need and how um things work, so.
So where does the y'all come from?
Yeah, so I'm originally from Minnesota, um, I went to the University of Mary in Bismarck, so my dad's from mine, so I'm familiar with the state, but. Um, I just graduated with a bachelor's in child development and a minor in Spanish from the University of Mary, so. Been out here for a while, so.
I thought maybe you were from someplace down south?
No.
Because you used that phrase, that's what I meant by that when I said that.
No, I don't know how it got into my dialect, but.
Well, welcome.
Yep.
Any other questions? How do you spell Vanette?
Vanette, V-A-N-N-E-T-T.
Oh boy, I'd have butchered, I'd have butchered that one.
I have no idea, I think it's Scottish, but I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, next on the agenda. Uh, we'll have Kelly Braun with the Dickinson Airport come forth.
Good morning Commissioners, Kelly Braun, Dickinson Municipal Airport Authority. Uh, happy to be back here again uh this morning to provide you an update on where we're at with the uh commercial terminal project at the airport. Uh, last time I was here, I had um a funding request from the Stark County for a four million and then. At a very busy a couple of hours, I boogied on up to Dunn County that same day. And made a presentation up there with a funding request of two million dollars, um, which they approved um that very day. Got a check that following Friday, so that was great news. And then um again at the city, um, for their um portion of the local share for this project. And I received a four million dollar uh verbal approval from the city. Funding from the state, uh, twenty-five million dollars from North Dakota Aeronautics Commission. And then a four-point-two million dollar reimbursement um to the city for debt uh for this project. Made a presentation, uh, Billings County for eight hundred thousand, uh, they're working through their budget process right now. And we should have some final word on that here very shortly. And then uh two million dollars for the project from uh the Airport Authority itself. The uh design right now is about ninety percent, uh, we're just working through our final stakeholder meetings. Uh, we've met with TSA, we've met with the airline, uh, and the car rental folks. Just making sure that we capture any detail that may have been overlooked uh with them. And then we have our page turn for final design scheduled here in a week or two. Uh, we're hoping to have this all wrapped up and uh being able to put it out for bid sometime uh end of September, first week in October. Um, jumping back to, to the uh funding, so as I mentioned uh last time I was here, we're not. Um, using any federal funds for the terminal building itself. When we use federal funds for projects, there are twenty-three grant assurances that we have to follow. Um, which adds significantly to the cost of any project, so. That combined with the fact that terminals are only eligible for fifty percent or so of federal funds. Uh, if, if you do a really good job of allocating um eligible square, square footage in the building, uh, you may approach fifty percent. So uh with all those factors taken into account, we elected not to use federal funds for uh the terminal, but we will be using federal funds. For the highway twenty-two improvements, um, and the access road to the building itself. And then the apron, the commercial apron and the connecting taxiways also. Uh, twelve million bucks or so from the feds uh will be for this project, but no funds for the actual building itself. Um, couple little uh issues that we've been working through, Southwest Water Authority. We have some issues with our fire suppression and being able to meet uh fire suppression uh and the code for that. Uh, we were hoping that we could get a two-inch uh unmetered line to help replenish. Uh, the three storage tanks that we have there, so if we have an event, we can replenish those tanks with the, within an eight-hour um timeframe. Uh, it doesn't look like that's gonna happen, so we're looking at a workaround for that, I think. Um, we're gonna have to increase the uh storage capacity for the fire suppression system. Right now, we have uh three, three tank storage, uh, about a hundred and five thousand gallons or so. We're gonna have to up that, um, probably another eight to ten thousand gallons. Um, significant, but uh not insurpassable, I guess. And then we'll have one tank um of potable water, about fifteen hundred gallons or so to meet the daily uh demands of the building. And be able to uh replenish that tank and not have a, an issue with stagnant water, whatever, in that potable water uh storage tank, so. Um, working through those issues, um, but I think we have a path forward for that. That's really all I've got for you guys this morning, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments? I know it was Commissioner Marsh and I sat in on a meeting yesterday where the feds are also doing the TSA component within the building, that's all of them, right?
Well, the TSA provides funding to um move and supply their own equipment. So when the, when the building is ready to go, the TSA will pay for moving the uh existing equipment, any of the equipment that they have. We just had some um new updates to some of the screening equipment, so they'll come in, they'll work all night, get all that transferred over. Uh, and then the funds for any of that equipment as well, but um actually paying for the square footage. No TSA funds are available for that. Um, we do get um a lease with TSA for their office spaces. Um, those are eligible for lease, but the, the square footage for the, for the screening equipment, for baggage screening and screening of passengers. That isn't eligible um for a lease, um, but the office spaces are.
Okay. Been hearing, so parking lot, who designs, who pays? Can you charge for parking?
We can charge for parking, yes. Um, so the parking lot is um part of the, of the building itself, that funding package, so that um. Thirty whatever million total amount includes um the parking lot also.
All right. Any other questions?
No, we did have some discussion, uh, some of the funding could have, for the parking lot, could have come from the federal side, though, correct?
Yeah, so there, if you accept federal funds for the parking lot, then you can't charge for parking, right? It's, it's an eligible cost, um, but you, you don't get to charge for parking and then the, the federal funds. Um, cannot be expended for maintenance, so, you know, you, you build a runway, they'll give you the money to build a runway, but they don't give you any money to maintain it. Um, and the same thing with the parking lot, so if you accept those federal funds, you can build it, but you can't get any, any federal funds to maintain it.
And the, the economics on that work?
For the, for the, yeah, I mean, yes, so we generate enough um revenue through paid parking to be able to maintain the, the parking lot, yes.
Okay.
So like Bismarck and all these places that have paid parking, don't get federal money for their parking lot?
That's correct, yep.
Wow.
Yep.
Well, obviously, as you know, we're s- starting our budgeting process today, uh, and uh the airport is on there, I think. You know, I think we're very, overall, we're very supportive, we just have to figure out the economics of what works for us as well, so.
Absolutely, and you know, as I mentioned before, um, you know, the, the four million um request. I mean, if we need to break that down and, and split that out, you know, two million one year, two million the following year, we can make that work, that, that, that works fine.
Just has to be received before the end of the project?
Correct. Shortly thereafter, anyway, yep.
Anticipated is what, twenty, when are you, be done, twenty-seven?
We will um be finished with the building in late uh twenty-seven. Uh, the grand opening scheduled for the fall of twenty-seven. So complete, project completion date is um, yeah, November probably of twenty-seven.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yep, thanks for having me this morning, appreciate the support.
Mr. Josephson, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you Chairman Messer, Commissioner Steve Josephson, County Planner. We have, you have two items before you today, um, these were also related to something that you, you voted on earlier, which was the vacation of a section line. Uh, one of them is a rezoning, it's RZ zero-five-twenty-five, it's a rezoning from, it's David and Nyla Michael are requesting a. Rezoning from rural residential to estate residential for approximately twenty, twenty-eight. It's about sixty-seven point seven-one acres. I'm gonna hand this out, cause this is, this isn't part of the um, I don't believe we have this as part of the um, the PowerPoint presentation.
Not cooperating with you today.
Yeah, I know, I was out sick yesterday, so this is my Monday, I guess. Anyway, the reason that they, they, they want to do this, to rezone part of this property is um. Next item up will be the Michael Final Subdivision. And they wanted to do a number of lots in the northern portion of this property that would be under five acres. So the estate residential is a minimum of, minimum of two acres. The um, both, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. And uh I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
So do we have a subsequent rezone for the rest of the property south of this coming?
No, it's gonna stay, those are gonna be larger, those are gonna be five acres or more, so they're just, those are just gonna remain as rural residential.
Okay.
And the applicants and their representative are here today in case you have any questions for them.
So I think one of the things that was discussed was uh road, Andrew, uh, in here. So we vacated the easement, or vacated, excuse me, the section line. And the primary access ingress egress for the subdivision will be the western, north, south kind of road?
Uh, yes, so that'll come up on our subdivision application here, but uh. Sorry, Andrew Shrank with Highlands Engineering, um, you're correct, the west road, uh, kind of the gray shaded area on here is currently constructed and has been for quite some time. We're dedicating that as right of way, we're also adding an east-to-west connection that'll connect to the section line on the east side. Uh, the owner has put substantial improvements into the section line road, the extent they can within the uh, the thirty-three foot that's available within the property to the east. So that road has been improved as well, so there are two access points and they are finishing up that connection across the east-to-west portion as well.
So my apologies, oh, let's deal with the zoning first and then we can do the plat, I apologize for that. Okay. So my apologies. Oh, let's deal with the zoning first, and then we can do the plot. I apologize for that. Okay.
You looking for a motion?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I would uh, move to approve RZ zero-five-two-five.
I'll second.
And then from the zoning from rural residential to estate residential? Correct. Okay. Any uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Clara, second by Commissioner Franchuk. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, Mr. Josephson.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner Messer. Um, Steve Josephson, County Planner. The next is a public hearing for FSP zero-zero-one-twenty-five. Uh, David and Nyla M- Michael are requesting approval of a final subdivision plat of the Michael subdivision. Uh, it's approximately two-hundred-and-four-point-four-nine acres in, in size. You have that in front of, in front of you. Uh, just a few things I did wanna talk about with this. We did have some conditions for um, for, we did have some conditions as part, as part of this, which the applicant has, the applicant has fulfilled. Uh, one of them was to, was to have a weed management plan, which they did. They've met with the weed supervisor, and they've started, the weed officer, and they've started spraying out there. One of them was also the en- our engineering firm that reviewed this gave them some comments. They were minor in nature, and they addressed them. And then also that they would have a road maintenance agreement for uh, future maintenance of the road done by the um, the owners and occupants of the um, of the subdivision. Um, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the uh, and the um, and staff recommend approval. The applicant would like to get up there with some discussion about uh, the a hundred-and-second Avenue access and the maintenance, and the maintenance of that, that's gonna require some discussion in front of the pla- in front of the county commission. So I'd like the applicant's representative to come up and discuss that, please.
Okay, so public hearing, do we need to open a pu- are we good here?
Yeah, you're good here. You don't need a pu- the public hearing was held at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson, Commissioners. Again, Andrew Schrank with Highlands Engineering. Um, as Steve indicated, there's been some discussion on I, basically the section line road on the east side of this subdivision, a hundred-and-second Avenue Southwest. Um, we've gone back and forth whether or not that should be or will be maintained by the HOA that's being established for this subdivision to take care of the subdivision roads, or if that would be considered a county road. Um, that road is on a section line. Um, it was previously, I'll say a, basically a two-track. Um, it wasn't traversable at times. There's some big drainages through there. Uh, the owner has gone in and put substantial improvements into that to the extent that they can. Without having the property on the east side, they're limited to thirty-three feet on the east side of this section line, which basically gets you to the back slope of a ditch on a standard county road. So you have no room to grade that road out. Uh, so with the thirty-three foot that's available by statute, they cannot fit a full county road in that area. Um, so again, they've put new structures in three different locations where there are creek crossings. They've widened that road to the extent feasible. The west side, they've put in ditches that meet and exceed county standards. Um, so it is significantly improved. Um, they are surfacing it currently. Um, so we would ask if the county would be willing to maintain and continue to maintain that road. Um, a few of our concerns are, it is a public road. The neighbor to the east has full rights to use that road. He can haul grain down that road. He can bring combines down that road. If he ruts that road and puts heavy equipment on that road, the HOA of this subdivision, per our standard, would be responsible for all of that. I, we don't feel that that's right. Um, the tax increase for this area, we did reach out to the assessing department uh, at the county. Taxes in twenty-four for this property were around twenty-seven-hundred dollars. After this is developed, before any structures are built, um, it was indicated that taxes will be between six-hundred to seventeen-hundred dollars per lot. We have twenty-eight lots on this subdivision. We're guessing probably twenty-five-thousand dollars in property tax, year one, before a structure is built. After structures, I mean, you can, obviously depends on the structures, but hundred-thousand dollars plus of property tax will be generated. And the owner has put all of the cost into the roads, improved the roads. So there should be, in our opinion, some input from the county for those taxes. With that, I guess I would uh, stand for any questions you may have and further discussion.
So the roadway easement on the east side, uh, what's the width of that? Because some of it's on current private property. You've slid that over and created an easement outside of the county right-of-way, or no?
On the west side, yes. We've dedicated seventy-five feet of right-of-way on the Michaels side. On the east side, that owner is not willing to give right-of-way. So it's just the statutory thirty-three feet is what's available.
So you're seventy-five plus thirty-three?
Correct.
Got it.
So now the road, is that built to our county standards then, or what? County specs?
Half yes, half no. Like I say, on the east side, we can't fit the standard ditch section within that thirty-three feet. So that would need to come at a later date when that right-of-way becomes available. Um, but we can't get a standard ditch section on the east side of that roadway.
He doesn't wanna give up any more land on this side to make it the complete width?
We could, but we still have the issue of this is a public road. Neighbors to the east can use it. They've put six figures plus into this road.
I've seen they've, impressive what they're doing there. I'm not trying to belittle it at all. And I guess, once again, I'm wondering what the county road department feels about, about this, if I can.
Before also, is there two culverts then that run through there that, uh, through the waterway?
Three, actually. It winds back and forth three different times through there. Yep. So they've improved those, and, and again, you know, like I said, this owner has put all the cost into this road. What happens when the neighbor to the east develops? Is there a different agreement? Does this subdivision have to continue to maintain a road that a neighbor is, is benefiting from? Um, so those are the issues we see with, with these shared, shared roadways.
And currently, the neighbor to the east, is he using that road?
For farm access, yes. They put in an approach about halfway down to access a farm to the east. I believe there's a s- two or three approaches into his, his property along that route.
Looks like there's the one right north of the stock dam is, I can see one.
Two or three?
There's three. Um, there's one at the, towards the southern end.
Okay.
Nyla, why don't you come on up and put yourself on record, please?
Hello, my name is Nyla Michael, and um, there are, the neighbor does have three approaches on that. One near, just before the stock dam goes into their pasture land, and in a farmstead that is existing there, but I believe it's vacant right now. And, and then they have one farther down, um, where it goes into the field, just past the stock dam. That one has a culvert, and then at the top of the hill, they have another access towards this southern end.
And how big are them culverts?
Um, it was, okay, thank you.
Uh, we had done a, a study on that to size them to county standards. I'd have to find it. I think the largest was a double thirty-six. Double forty-eight? Double forty-eight was the largest on the south. Uh, the smallest, I think, was maybe a three-foot diameter. I'd have to find it, but.
Did it hold up this morning?
Yes, so far.
So are we, are you asking for two things here? Number one, approval of the plat, and number two, for uh, Stark County's uh, involvement in the road?
Yes, sorry, Mr. Messer. So we do have with our subdivision, I don't know if you got a draft of the covenants, conditions, and restrictions that we put together. Uh, in that document, it states that the owner will be responsible for the subdivision roadways except one-hundred-and-second Avenue Southwest. That would be a county roadway. Um, if that's not agreeable, we have a second draft that says the owner will create an HOA. They'll be responsible for all roadways. So uh, looking for the county's consideration on maintenance of a hundred-and-second and final plat approval.
Todd. Todd Miller, Road Operations Specialist for Stark County Road Department. Um, uh, I was asked that at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I could not give an, a definite yes or a no. I'd rather have that come from you guys as commissioners. Um, but far as uh, maintaining that road, um, we would have no problem of doing that. That's just a short stretch. Uh, they've tremendously improved it. It was a section line that was hardly, you know, travelable. Um, they did, was nice enough to put in those approaches for their neighbors to get access to the fields, which I thought was great. Um, we did supply one used pipe for one of those approaches, which was needed. And um, but other than that, I would have no issue whatsoever.
The only, the concern that I would have is that if the half of the road is built to spec and the other half isn't, we have emergency vehicles. Some of them fire trucks are extremely heavy when they got water on them. Uh, plows, stuff like that, the heavy equipment that's required, our, our, our road surfaces that are required to handle that equipment when it comes up and down these streets.
Um, far as in, in the interior, I don't know what the, um, far as what they're building in the interior of it, um, for this one. Um, we could have, I mean, far as being on there with a blade or anything like that, it's not an issue.
Well, I mean, we have a lot of roads in the county that would be Oh, yeah. tougher terrain than this, but I think it's, it's a good question.
Yep.
So my question is, is there's a, there's a carve-out lot on the west side of the, the subdivision. It's somebody who previously built that new house down there, I believe. On, on the subdivision, right below?
Yes, that lot is not owned by, it's Mr. Yeah, Dennis Smith, I believe it is.
So my question to Todd would have been, we are currently running up and down that trail to provide service and uh, maintenance to that half-mile or whatever that is, or not?
No, no. That's all private.
Okay, and they're, they're currently taking care of their own road. Okay, got it.
Yeah, the, the one-on-second just goes right to the, to the interstate, and there's gonna be no, don't, won't provide any access out to the interstate from that point on the nor- uh, south end of it.
Todd, also with some other agreements we've had with other HOAs, uh, what's pretty consistent? Like uh, what the county uh, provides, what the HOA provides?
This is, like, this is one of the first ones far as the HOA is, I, that I know in, that are developed in like um, of the subdivisions that I know of.
Weren't we just speaking of one on highway ten, where the HOA was willing to, on a chip seal?
Yep, on a chip seal, uh, individuals that live in that subdivision, they pay thirty, like thirty percent of the cost of, I think it was greed upon, when that, I couldn't.
There's no HOA in copper leaf?
There's not?
There's not, right?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no maintenance agreement? Nothing on record? I thought, I saw something. Okay, anyway, that's fine, if there's not.
Could be, have to check with the recorder's office on it.
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. White, I guess from limited research, I looked at it, looked like back in December of September, excuse me, of two thousand and ten, is when the county road policy changed. Prior to that, the county used to maintain subdivision roads. In September of two thousand and ten, that policy changed. I'm not sure, I believe it's what's on file today. I'm not sure, but I did find an article that indicated that's when that policy changed. I know back in April of two thousand and twenty-two, there was discussion on subdivision roads at the commission. Um, you know, whether or not, what level of maintenance the county should be providing? Is it snow removal? Is it chip seals? What level should there be? Because it has been fairly inconsistent. Um, there was a motion to form a committee. I'm not sure what came out of that committee, if anything, but uh, there has been a lot of discussion on this issue in the past as well. Um, the other subdivisions we've worked on, I can't think of anywhere we've had a stretch of section line road like this one has, but they have been one-hundred percent maintained by the developer and HOA. Um, no county involvement for the last ten years, I would say.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask for some consistency is because I do believe there's gonna be, in the, in the years to come, several more subdivisions pop up. I, we've seen several of them over the last couple of years.
Question. Uh, so lots thirteen, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, is there only access to those three lots from a hundred-and-second? Is that correct? On the very southeast edge, or southeast corner?
That would be correct, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Clara.
Okay.
So the uh, old um, rest area, down way on the south side, those are all, buildings have all been, I mean, what's the status of that? Uh, I see that as kind of one of the lots you have. It's the big lot, I guess. Um, are there improvements down there anymore? I can't even, no.
Yeah, there is Southwest Water to that lot. There are some remnants of the, the Loop Road there, uh, really no structures left. Uh, they don't have any immediate plans to develop or sell off that area. They plan to, to farm that for the foreseeable future. Uh, we originally had, in our previous version, two lots shown down there. We did combine that into one large lot, since, like we say, they really have no plans to, to sell that off at this time. Uh, they own actually the farm to the south, and they can get to that property under the overpass on interstate there. Uh, so they'll uh, continue to kind of farm that for the foreseeable future, but it could be sold off someday for a residential lot.
Is it, is it your residential, a new residential lot right there?
Uh, just north of there, yes, and they are actually part of this subdivision plat as well.
So can, can we do this in, in sections here? You've got that short section coming from off of highway ten, going south to th- thirty-sixth street? I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that those lots will be the, one of the, probably the first ones occupied, I would think. I mean, would it make some sense that, you know, at least make that road passable for emergency vehicles? Um, and then in the event that you actually sell twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, you know, we can come and discuss that at a, you know, different point?
Commissioner, I would, um, so they have already improved these roads. They are passable by emergency vehicles, even with the section line road. Uh, like I say, the only county standard it wouldn't meet is the ditch size on the west side. So you just don't have as much place to put snow. But the east ditch, I'm sorry, the west ditch is significant and could store a lot of snow. The east ditch is more of a V ditch, but the road surface is plenty wide. Um, the other item, they did put scoria surfacing on, not the, the county gravel spec. Um, so it is surfaced with the scoria, but it will support emergency vehicles. It's, it's a well-built road. Mark, they hired Mark Construction, a, a very reputable contractor to put that road together. Um, even the east-to-west road, they're eighty to ninety percent done with that road as well. Um, so they are in place.
That was basically my question on the road, being to standard, the only thing that's not standard is, is the ditch, then?
The ditch, and like I say, the surfacing with the scoria.
And everything else, and the, okay, that's, that's basically where I was coming from with my question before.
Yep, so it'll support, it's plenty wide for emergency vehicles. It'll support emergency vehicles. It's, it's just a smaller ditch section, so.
But what you're asking for is maintenance of that road. In the event it gets tore up or you have a snow event, you wanna be able to get in and out of that road with county services.
Correct. One-hundred-and-second would be the only one. And honestly, for the, there won't be, really the only residences accessing it would be those south three lots. And again, those may be down the roadways. They plan to still farm that area for a while. Um, so for the foreseeable future, it may not be much more access than it is now.
Just one last question. Would they be open to at some point, I mean, you know, when you get developed like this, you, the money goes out early and comes in late, would you be open to, you know, the first section of that one-on-two, uh, after a certain point, replace or overlaying gravel on top of the scoria? Should it be deemed, you know, necessary?
Essentially adding gravel to the surface that's there.
I mean, that's, we've done that as a county a lot, right? You use the clay in the co- in the scoria as kind of the base and the heart, and then you throw gravel over the top to make a nice surface. Yep.
Come on up, come on up.
Okay, Nyla Michael again. Um, I just have a couple of comments to make, too, but um, I guess I would ask that uh, we just built another gravel road um, for, helped the neighbor put in an access to his property by Gladstone last year. The county did gravel that and rebuild the fence for the neighbors that was taken down for that road. Um, so I guess I, guess I could ask if the county would overlay that with gravel for us? Just because we have so much cost in it, but if, if not, I guess we can do it.
Just asking, you know, I, I don't know which one you're talking about particularly.
For Jason Schmidt's, Schmidt's Road last year. So we're offering to build out the neighbors. We did have to remove part of their fence because it was on the road in the section line, and we do have to rebuild a, a piece of that, about a eighth of a, I don't know, quarter of a mile, eighth of a mile. And, and then um, just the cost that we've gotten into that road to, to build it. Um, I did wanna make another comment that when the oil fields are allowed Um, I did want to make another comment that when oil fields are allowed to, and I found that on Stark County website, when oil fields apply for a permit in a thirty-three feet wide road, um, they have to fit their roadway into the thirty-three feet, or the sixty-six feet wide. And this, the side, our side fits the eighty feet wide roadway rule. Uh, the east side does fit the sixty-six feet wide rule. So it is a good road. Um, but I guess it's up to you guys if you want to help us out on that, thank you.
So the east side is from the center to edge thirty-three?
Yes.
It's, sorry, so the, the, it's the statutory right of way, so it's a thirty-three foot right of way. The road top meets the, I think it's a twenty-four foot road top, but I would say it probably exceeds that. Yeah, they're a twenty-eight foot road top, um, on that section. So like I said, the only thing that doesn't meet is the scoria surface, and then that's a V ditch on the east side, and that's all they could fit in that thirty-three feet. And so half of that driving surface is actually on the neighbor's property. So half of the driving surface is on the right of way dedicated by the subdivision, half of the driving surface is within, uh, the property to the east within the statutory right of way.
Any other comments, questions, what are your wishes?
Well, we need to approve the subdivision first.
Yes.
Yeah, and yes, and as a, as a reminder, it's two separate items.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mister Chairman, I'll move to approve FSP zero one two five, application of David and Nyla Michael, uh, creating the final subdivision plat for the Michael subdivision.
By Commissioner Clarice, do we have a second?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Franchuk, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
I'll make a motion that the county maintain the one hundred and second avenue southwest in that area, and they're responsible for the interior of the subdivision.
Okay, by Commissioner Franchuk.
I'd second that.
By Commissioner Clarice, any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Does it comment, Todd, or?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I don't know if I can pull that.
Wanted more of a clarification on his motion, uh, responsible for interior, who, they are responsible.
They're responsible.
In his motion, it says interior road.
So I can, for further discussion, so we're gonna maintain one hundred and second, is there any discussion, um, about adding some road surfacing, at least for that small portion from Highway ten off to the intersection of thirty-sixth? I mean, or is that gonna be a third motion that we need to do?
Well, uh, my only thing was, I didn't want to have that requirement right now, let them sell and develop some lots, uh, and then hopefully use some of those proceeds to continue, uh, further development of the subdivision. Uh, that was my only comment.
Plus, if we were very responsible for it, if there's an issue with the county, their road department can take care of it at that time, then if there's an issue.
Well, whatever works, yep, I agree.
And only up to the, to the current ending stopping point, correct?
Yeah, that, I agree. Okay, anything else, Mister Josephson?
Thank you.
Oh, we did vote.
For the, for the, uh.
Maintenance.
Maintenance?
Yeah, we did vote. All right.
I think sometime we, we should probably work out a policy too on these subdivisions, is how we're gonna do this, I mean, we don't have a written policy on how we should maintain these things.
Yeah, yep, I, well, Todd's here, we can kind of throw that on your lap a little bit. Uh, work, kind of have a policy, uh, for rural subdivisions on road maintenance and development improvements and those kind of things at some point, so that we're not all over the board like, uh, was referenced today. Okay. Elena?
Morning, Commissioner, we're just manager, Elena Decker, um, just give you a quick July update. Me lifelines, sorry, it's kind of weird, but it was what it was, me lifelines are stable. Oh, it's transcribing me, I don't want that. Uh, July for the fire departments, about eighty-eight calls, uh, quite a few structure fires actually in the county, it was just a weird month for that. Uh, one of those structure fires was in Dunn County, but a couple of our departments go up into Dunn County, so it counts kind of towards their calls. Severe warnings issued across the state for the month. Uh, yellow is thunderstorm warnings, green is flood advisories, and red and orange are tornado warnings. We did have a flood advisory today, we got close to an inch of rain within forty-five minutes, so that threw us into an advisory today. Uh, on July twenty-fifth, we had that hailstorm come south of town, it stretched forty-two miles. It's about two miles wide, that is the scar from that. And oddly enough, it almost is kind of a similar path to the tornado in June, so, just kind of odd, but a lot of crop damage, um, from that report. And then on the twenty-seventh, we had the high winds in Bellfield and Richardson, you can see top of the list is Bellfield, and bottom of the list right there is Richardson, those were caught on our periwether stations that we reported to the National Weather Service. That eighty mile an hour, eighty mile per hour gust took part of a roof off a building in downtown Bellfield. So Brad was actually, my deputy was up at two in the morning reporting that to the weather service at the time, so we, we give them all the information, we pull from our stations, we give them wind speed, we give them air quality, we give them precipitation. Um, they use all that stuff in their reports, so we, we made the top of the list, so. And then starting, it started the first here of the month, but we have two new public alerts that may come through, we have the feather alert, which is for missing endangered or abducted indigenous adults. And then we have missing endangered persons alert. Um, those are just additional alerts that you may see come through now, those were, um, voted on by the state and approved, and those started just this month, so. I'll take any questions.
Must have been pretty complete.
What's that?
You have a couple contracts, right?
I have a couple contracts, yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
I have one contract and then an update to the burn restriction, so. The contract I have is with Denny's Electric to do the maintenance on the, uh, generator on Radar Base Hill. That helps our radio tower, if the power goes up, up, out up there, it's six hundred fifty dollars, I have that built into my budget, so I'm just looking for approval to renew that.
I'll make that motion.
By Commissioner Clarice, second by Commissioner Marsh. Under discussion, I'm just wondering if somehow we shouldn't look at all generators controlled by the county, uh, potentially packaging them? Maybe trying to get some scale of economic scale, uh, and then we know they're all not done, and if one forgets that there's a generator that doesn't get serviced, so if you want to look into that.
Yeah, I can show you that.
Okay.
And then second, um, I met with, I meet with the fire chiefs every first.
I need, we need to vote on your motion. Okay. Any other discussion?
Six hundred and fifty dollars?
Six fifty. And I think Commissioner Clarice made it, Commissioner Marsh seconded it, so, uh, roll call vote, Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Mar, uh, White.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, not, Cheryl vote aye, motion passes.
Uh, I meet with the fire chiefs every first Monday of the month, I met with them yesterday. We discussed the burn restriction, and they are open to lifting the burn restriction on the pits off of low and moderate, back down to high, or back up to high. Should say for the month of August, this moisture was, has been really beneficial, we are out of the dry category for the first time this year. We would like to allow those pits to be burned in August, but in September, we're probably gonna have to put it back on just as a precaution, because September, usually August and September are our dry months, but it's just been an odd year, and it's been, you know, we've been pretty plentiful with moisture, and they're, they're willing to kind of let it go till September and then put it back on, and then once the snow falls, take it off again, so I'm just looking for.
Can we get a motion to that effect? Or comments?
And I'll take questions.
Or questions?
Questions, comments?
I think it's a good idea.
When was the last time we moved it to this area? It's been over a year?
We changed it, we moved the pits into low and moderate in April. So I think we started January till about end of March, we were in this category. And then April was about when I got the, the information packet from the weather service that we were gonna be dry, and now I feel like a liar. But, I mean, it is what it is, and especially with this, we got, we measured an inch and a half on our station in town here, I think point seven in Bellfield, point five in Richardson, so good dump of moisture, this should carry us fingers crossed to September, and this just puts us at, if we go high and above, if we really dry out, we're not gonna allow it anyway. So this is just if we still maintain low and moderate conditions, it's still have to be called in and approved.
The extended forecast looks favorable as well.
For August, yeah, I think they predicted up around the eleventh, there's some good moisture potential, so I mean, we have some good chances.
But we don't have hundred degrees coming down, I mean, we're talking.
I hope not.
All right.
I make a motion to approve this
by.
Burn restriction dated August fifth.
Okay, by Commissioner Clarice.
I second.
By Commissioner White. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, I'll take it right away.
All right. Natalie?
Chairman, members of the board, I'm Natalie Wandler, Star Coney Tax Director. Um, we have a new contract, well, it's not a new contract, but it's for twenty, our twenty-five complex aerial is, is the one that does our huge industrial plants, the two, the one in Bellfield, the one out here. The rail facility, our saltwater disposals. Um, they did do Red Trail in Richardson a couple of years ago, but he is, basically his contract is going up from forty thousand eight hundred to forty-five-five, so a forty-seven hundred dollar increase. And then we just need the new contract signed, if you guys are okay with that.
So forty-five thousand for seven properties?
Yep.
And when he extends those, how, I mean, you've given us a copy of that report, correct?
Yep, I have binded copies in my office, if you want one right now.
Okay, any questions? Comments? And, and doing this, he will have this completed by when, which makes it effective for the twenty twenty-six tax year?
Yes, he does, he sends me everything by March first every year, so that I have everything ready for my equalization meetings.
Okay.
Yep.
And if we didn't approve the contract, you would lock in at last year's rates, or what would you do?
Probably, I mean, depending on what our commercial values do, I, you know, we would probably adjust them like we do the commercial values.
Just on a flat rate?
Yep. Um. As far as the activity and the different changes that go on out there, you know, he gets all that information from them companies, he actually keeps track of all that. I know a lot of his information he gets off of different websites that give him different information, and that he makes adjustments with that kind of information. Um, the last couple of years, they went down a little bit. Um, I'm sure it's just depreciation more than anything, but.
Imagine these seven properties are not gonna change that much here over here.
Well, and that was gonna be one of the things I wanted to visit with Natalie about, was maybe doing this every other year, but, um, I guess my position, I think we need to do it one, one time and then talk about doing it every other year or every third year. Uh, because we've kind of hit some stability in these kind of assets, so.
Yeah, and the other one that we'll have to, well, or the city of Richardson, well, if they decide to do something over there with the ethanol plant.
Right.
Because they bought a bunch of land and they're talking about redoing that and making it a whole different facility, so that would definitely have to be done by somebody outside of my office.
Right.
You said they'd already done Red Trail, though?
They did Red Trail.
In twenty-three, he did it.
Yeah.
Because there's significant changes coming there.
Well, if that.
Right, yeah.
That, uh, aviation fuel, but that wouldn't even be, I mean, they're talking twenty-eight, twenty-nine before that's up and running, so.
Yes.
Okay. Thoughts, actions? I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, complex, uh, bid for valuation on the seven properties listed and approve that contract.
I would second that, but is, you, the state's attorney reviewed this contract, or?
I haven't seen it, is it the same? I, I haven't seen it, I guess.
It's the same contract.
The same contract.
But a ten percent increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably when we first hired him. How long's he been? Probably six years, seven years?
I guess I would make the, the second then with approval by the state's attorney on the contract.
You accept that? I do. Okay, any other discussion?
Well, so we have an apparatus in place, if we don't do this appraisal, we will, you, you can, you will, you will assess it out of your office, basically?
Well, I will probably adjust it, just like I do all the other commercial, because I don't have the expertise on the industrial property as far as what's personal property, what's changed, what, you know, what their production, all that different stuff that he figures into there, like.
I, my comment would be, I would like to see us do this less frequent, but I think the lead time in order to hand that over to you is, I don't think we have enough time to do that currently, we need to probably engage them one more time and then do it in an infrequent basis.
And the last time we did it was twenty-three?
Oh, she did it every year.
Yeah, he's done it every year for six years, I think it's been six, I'll look for sure, but, yeah, there used to be like s- six or seven saltwater disposals, and now I think we're down to three. So he has gotten rid of a lot of them, and, but they just go away, af- after a while, they just reclaim the land and so then we don't get any value off of them anymore.
And the challenge is too, from a, uh, valuator's standpoint, the data in most cases is the same, so what he is doing or she is doing is going out and just trying to fill in new comps. And, uh, the most difficult year is the first time you do it, and, uh, takes the most time, so, um, but.
And he does have a very good relationship with the four bigger ones, that, you know, they send him the information that he needs in a very timely manner, so that he gets everything, and he knows how to analyze all that data and give us a value.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Cheryl vote aye, Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, buildings and ground supervisor position, Joanna?
Good morning, Joanna Piercy, Human Resources Director. Uh, Neil and I conducted interviews for the building and ground supervisor, and we would like to recommend Wayne Shots for a hire. Uh, Wayne currently works for the Dickinson Public Schools, has been there for probably eighteen years or more, and currently manages, uh, eleven buildings, I believe it is. Um, he would start an annual salary of seventy-five thousand, and then after six months, which would be in our new budget year, he would move to seventy-eight thousand.
So he manages buildings for?
Dickinson Public Schools.
For the school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He's got all the, all the elementary schools, the administrative office.
The Halliburton facility?
Huh?
Is he, the Halliburton facility that they took over?
CTE, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Very well qualified, I would be pleased to get that application.
Sounds great.
And we're just doing this as a formality of a practice where we want full commission approval for, uh, department heads, so. Okay, I would look for a motion to approve that, uh, hire.
So moved.
By Commissioner White, second.
Second.
By Commissioner Clarice, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Do you have anything else, Joanna? Do you have anything else, Joanna?
I do have the tuition reimbursement request.
Let's go ahead and do that one.
Okay. We had an application period from May 1st to May 31st. And I got an application from Jeremiah Kirkpatrick to finish up his master's degree in IT management. This would be the, he'd be eligible for up to $1,500 and then that would be the most that he could have for this year. So, I'm requesting 1,500 for tuition reimbursement.
Make the motion to approve?
I'll second.
By Commissioner White and Commissioner Franchuk. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Auditor Eagles, request special permit.
I'm kind of glad that the commission agreed to approve the ones involving alcohol and beer, because I did have a question. I see one of these permits is for an event that has to do with National Shoot to Retrieve Dog Competition. Are they shooting actual guns out there and are we allowing them to drink alcohol? That's my question.
They don't drink while they're.
Yeah, this usually happens after the event.
Yeah.
It's not, no way, nowhere near the during the event. It's after the event.
Okay, sorry, I thought that was a legitimate question.
It is, it is, it absolutely is.
On the applications too, it says the premises within the limits of the incorporated city. It is not. They got yes on there in both of them.
Every time they fill it out, they circle the wrong circle. So, it should say no.
Yeah.
Send it back to them and tell them to bring it back, correct?
So, can we get a motion to approve that one as needed correction? Or are we approving more than one here?
There's two.
There's two.
There is one for the Mid-North National Shoot to Retrieve.
The second and third, and then the other one for August 9th.
Yep, and then the mud volleyball tournament at the fairgrounds.
So, they're going to play volleyball drunk?
I'd prefer that over guns.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, the license for the special event during the mud volleyball tournament at the fairgrounds.
Just the single one or both?
I, I, I don't know if we want to do, we've done them separate individually in the past.
Okay, we have a motion, second.
I'll second.
By Commissioner Marsh. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Now, the National Shoot and Retrieve Competition.
I'll also make the motion to approve the National Shoot and Retrieve Competition license.
Commissioner White.
I'll second it.
By Commissioner Claris. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Anything else before we roll into, um, budget items? Okay.
Five minutes.
Karen would like five more minutes. I think that was the song they played the other night, so. Call the meeting back to order. And we'll begin, begin our process of budget discussions. And visiting with Karen, we thought maybe it would be prudent to make sure everybody understood the requests that are in front of us for contributions before we started going into some of the department recommended for budgets. So, does everybody have the budget contribution, 2026 budget contribution sheet in front of them?
I did send it in two different spots. So, you can either look at it on the one that says the requested contributions with that documentation. Or if you have your 2026 prelim budget open, it's the last sheet in your bottom tabs. Either one, yep, that's it, yep. And the ones that are highlighted, if you're on your screen, they would have been highlighted in yellow. I did include those in our general fund totals, but it's up to you, the dollar amount that you want to approve. But I included them for the purposes of that affects our budget by over a million dollars. And so, we kind of have to, to get straight numbers.
Just the ones in yellow have been added to?
Have been included, yes. But you can change the dollar amounts. I just wanted us to have an overall picture.
As far as, so that 500,000 on the ambulance, has there been some discussion with the city of Dickinson on that number? Or is that just kind of an estimate on your part, or were you?
I did call the city of Dickinson. I got ahold of the fourth person. And they said that they are estimating, still budgeting an amount there. Because they don't know, they just started out and they don't know how much they're going to have received and if they're going to need funds to carry over. I'm under the impression that we would earmark it and then they would need to send some sort of documentation to us on what our 50% would be, that we're not just sending them a check for 500,000.
We kind of thought it would might be in this range anyway, right?
For the first year, yeah, we did, yeah. A few of the other ones that I had changes on, Bellfield, the ambulance, that might come in even lower. I know in 2025, they purchased a new ambulance, so they didn't think that cost, you know, so we were reflective in that cost of paying for that. So, she, uh, the Billings County Auditor did say that the cost would come in lower for 2026. What we actually pay them is not, we don't just send them a check for 240 or 250 or 230. That's just like an earmarked amount. They send us an invoice.
And we're responsible for 20%?
20% of their overall emergency management budget for Billings County. The other one that I have in here, the Stark County Fair Association. I have it earmarked for 124,500. We usually give them a half a mil. I haven't received their budget yet or their request, so that would be up to the commission. Dickinson Area Chamber of Commerce doesn't change. That's usually about the amount that they invoice. We wait for the invoice. Roosevelt Custer, they were, they did send us over a letter and that's what they're requesting. Domestic violence, that's what they got last year. They did ask for an increase last year of $5,000. I put those amounts in there in their letter. They requested an increase, but they didn't say how much. So, I put the amounts from last year in there and then that is up to the commission. Yeah, so there's two different lines. The, the second line is, is for the Family Connection Center, that's downtown. And then the other one is the regular domestic violence shelter. Best Friends Mentoring, I, they, I don't think have sent their letter yet, so I just put it in at 20,000, because that's what they requested last year. Community Action asked for an increase as they want to add a financial class to their, um, program. Healthcare, Richardson Healthcare Foundation, they don't really send us a letter. Sometimes we get like a thank you note every year. Uspire, I haven't heard anything from, but that's what you gave last year, so I included it in this preliminary budget. Vision West, that's what the membership was last year. I haven't received anything yet this year on, from them, as far as an invoice or anything. Dickinson Library hasn't, that's up to you, that was a requested amount. Home on the Range, I included that documentation. I think they're going to be coming to our September commission meeting. But I went ahead and asked them for the document and how much they were requesting, so we could include it in these conversations. Southwest District Health, Public Nurse, for the last few years, we've all wondered what that $750 is. I talked to Sherri Adams and she just said it's been $750 since before she started there. So, she said it was okay if we got rid of that line, it was fine. So, we're just not, we're getting rid of that. And then Sunrise Youth, Youth Bureau, you usually allocate one mil worth. And so, I put 249,000 in there for, because that's about one mil worth.
Okay, thank you. Is, or are, is anyone willing or want to open up discussion on any of these items? If you want to start at the big one and go small, or you want to go to the small one and go big? We, you know, we, we do have to make some decisions. There is going to be a, a challenge, I think, to a certain point to prioritize our responsibilities and, and, uh, relative to the county, so we might as well start those discussions today.
Community Action is adding what to their list?
They're adding a, they want to add like a financial planner to help people.
Do checkbooks and all that.
Yeah, with their financial planning is what I understood.
A lot of their federal funding is in question too, you know, too, so they're probably going to be running short.
And that's a challenge. We, you know, I don't know that we can be the stopgap for all things federal fund reductions, right?
Right, no, no, we can't be.
There, there has to be some built-in efficiencies on some of these as well. They're going to have to make some efficiencies, just like us, and figure it out. Everybody on that list can make a pitch and make you feel good about what they do. Again, it's, this is not a slam on any one of them, if any one of them is reduced or eliminated. It's just, we have, we have challenges in front of us too.
I would make the comment that I'd like to start County Fair Association before we agree.
We're having a meeting, I think on the 13th, our budget meeting.
You are, okay.
Well, and, and I think, you know, Commissioner Marsh and I have talked about trying to potentially even restructure that. We, we brought it up last year. They said it was too late in the game to do it. We've tried, you know, opening that can of discussion. So, in my opinion, we, we either need to close the door on that or we try to make some progress towards doing that, which is ultimately, potentially, even the park director this morning said, you know, an advanced coordinator is kind of where the role has transformed into. So, I think all those things and having that budget discussion, I think, is timely.
And these are just earmarked for our preliminary. If there's some of these requests, keep in mind, you know, we can change these. This is our preliminaries going out. We do have the next two months to change things if we need to, just so you know.
Yeah.
Well, that discussion that you were just mentioning, Neil, that's going to bring in park board budget in that discussion as well.
Right, is that right? The park, is that in, so we have the, again, we talked about it last month. We kind of have three separate buckets of 3% increases. We have our general, we have the, uh, the road ones, and then we have the Extension Service Weed Airport and, uh, one more. Four in, in this, another bucket, right?
So.
Library.
So, yeah, so for, for our caps buckets, it's by taxing district. And if the commissioners want to take and look at their page one, um, that says summary, the first page that says summary, those are what we're looking at for the preliminary budget summary. Those are our bucks, our buckets that we have. So, um, you see max cap bucket. And then I put the dollar amount, the total dollar amount. And then for the second one as well, basically that's saying the max that we can, we can do out of that bucket, okay? Included in one bucket, we have the County General, County Road and Bridge, County JDA, Vector Control, our jail capital projects, soil conservation, and senior citizens, because that's, that taxing district encompasses the whole county, okay? State Medical, we're just kind of forced to do one mil. So, it does, it's, it's in its own land over there. And then our other bucket that we have involves the County Library, County Airport, and County Weed, because that taxing district includes the entire county except for the city of Dickinson. So, that's another bucket. And then we have the County Road Unorganized, which is its own bucket, because it doesn't include any of the cities. And then we have Southwest District Health is also its own, because we have eight counties that contribute to that. Like that taxing district in its by taxable value is across eight counties. So, we separated out Southwest District Health. So, those are your buckets that you're working with. This budget summary that I have here for the 2026 budget is showing you the $20,240 amount that was levied for 2024 tax year and what that mil number was. We are now in 2025 tax year and of course, 2026 budget. So, um, I want you to see what the difference was. The amounts that I proposed for that do include everything that was highlighted on your contribution sheet. And then some of those are kind of outside the normal. The amounts proposed all fall within our buckets. So, um, it uses, like, we have to use up County Road Unorganized. We have to max that bucket, because it's not to 18 mils yet. And in order for us to qualify for flex funding through the state, which is huge for County Road, we have to, we have to max that. So, that one, we have no choice on.
At 18.
At 18, but we're actually going to be at 17.4. So, I have to divide the county in half and so that when the state treasurer's office adds the 17.4 and 17.4, it meets the 18. I'm not even.
So, the, the 1,381,000, that number has the 3% in it.
Correct.
Okay, so the other question then, uh, which is a point of contention for many of us, this, this, this state's medical school, they get the goal from 229 to 249, because they're mandated one mil, which is almost 10%. They get 10%, the rest of us get less than that.
But they're not even in the bucket with the rest, yeah.
I get it, but I'm just saying.
You are correct.
But yet, when we tried to propose getting rid of that one mil, it remeets, it meets huge resistance at the legislature. Okay, so are, are there any restrictions? Is the Southwest District Health merely typically a dollar amount? Or is that tied, I see 3.4 in last year's mil levy, so that's a variable number that we can apply without having some mil requirement tied to it?
You actually don't really have too much control over that Southwest District Health mil, because I have to take all the taxable values for all of the counties in my Southwest District Health unit and put all those values in with their budget request, and that gives me the mil number.
Okay.
So, you, you don't have much over the Southwest District Health.
Okay, so that's the point I'm trying to get to is a number that is non-negotiable. If we start from the bottom is the mandated mil for the state, uh, school, medical school, 249. The estimate for Southwest District Health, because that's based on a total county valuation plus other counties, that's 800 approximately. And the, uh, need to maximize our County Road Unorganized at 1,381,127. Those three are fixed, non-negotiable, correct?
Those ones needed, yeah, tho, those ones need to be where they're at.
Okay, so then we can start going into the negotiable bucket.
Which would be the library, County JDA?
If you wanted to tackle those three, well, yeah, actually, you can, you can take the blue, which is in its own bucket. I would prefer to do it that way.
Okay.
Tackle those three and make a recommendation. Again, what we're doing today is adopting a preliminary budget, which is the max. And I don't want, I don't like to personally see us reach for the sky and then start chipping away and going down. I'd like to have us give some thought to these and, uh, you know, try to get close to the, to a number somewhere down the road. So, um, so the library is a, that's the operational number. It is not a request for, it is not part of the, the. It is not a request for, it is not part of the, the building funds, that's a separate request, that's.
This is their, the normal, what they get from us, yep.
Okay, the, the airport, again, they can get up to four, we gave them point nine six. And so under that scenario, we can't, we can only give them one point oh three or some number close to that, if you, if you're thinking.
The ninety-one thousand is what the verbal request was, because you have to remember that with those three being in a bucket, if, let's say, the weed doesn't use all of the three percent increase, then the dollars can be used for like airport or weed, I mean, airport or library.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, so in the weed board met last week, and the number requested is the fixed number, three forty-one, six-six-nine, seventy-nine?
That's not what we, I mean, we're just talking about general property taxes here, right? I'm just looking at what we proposed there, I thought we proposed three thirty-five, six-six-nine.
Let me go over to weed real quick.
You said you, you think three thirty-five, six-six-nine instead of three forty-one?
Yeah.
So you have to.
It would have been three percent, three percent over, year over year.
So you have to add the, and I think that's where, wait, I see three, what do I have in there? I see three forty-one, does that make sense?
From Joe, you got that from Joe?
From Joe, but see.
Are you adding the mobile home taxes and all that?
See, that's just it, is we do have to add what I go off of really, because the mobile home is so small. What I usually go off of for determining is the general property taxes and the homestead credit line. So if you go over to weed.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
So you just added the home, or the homestead to it.
I just do the homestead and general property tax line.
So that bucket is eight, eight point four mils, right? One bucket?
Well.
Wait.
The blue one?
Yes.
Well, it's not going to be mils anymore because our mil value went up, and so the caps are based on dollars and not mils.
Yeah, that's just to show you what we mailed last year.
Okay.
Yep.
Seven seventy-five.
So we, we, we used the wrong, I mean, we just based that three, the original three thirty-five, we just added three, three percent to that three twenty-five, eight ninety-three from last year. We didn't add the homestead credit from the prior year.
Homestead credit really didn't used to make much of a difference, but since they broadened it, now it's really, we're really getting a lot of people who are getting the homestead credit so that, and it is included in your general property taxes, so i- if you came in and paid your taxes, then the state sends us the homestead credit amounts in June, I want to say. So you have to take that into consideration for the mil.
So has the library typically made a request, or have we just, what's the history on that?
There, well, I think, are we on number three for our library head? We've kind of went through some, right? So sometimes they would send a budget. They are getting it together, they're, they're working with the city of Dickinson to work on that, but I think they do their own budget, Bernie, correct me if I'm wrong? You're on that board, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah. Did you approve a preliminary budget?
Not yet.
Oh. Yeah.
Okay.
So that, to me, is just a, an estimate based on kind of where they were at before. And weed this year did not need any general funds transferred in for theirs. They are maintaining, now that they do have a balance.
So just, I'm following your sheet here, so you have the max cap bucket, your blue line there, seven-seven-six, one thirty-seven. That's the maximum those three entities could, could levy, right?
Yep, all together, dollars wise.
And we're underneath that number with those three as proposed?
Yes, by like four hundred and something dollars.
That's close.
Yeah.
And then max cap budgets, under the orange is eleven million nine hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars, and I haven't added all that up, are we under there?
Yes.
Okay.
What is that number, if you had them up?
Where we're currently at?
Yeah, the, so the, if the max bucket is eleven-nine-sixty, what is the columns added up to?
Um, I currently have.
Ten-nine-fifty-two?
Let me just add this one real quick. Eight-nine-twenty. No, eleven-nine-fourty-six, nine-twenty.
Nine-fourty-six, nine-twenty?
Yep.
Not too tight.
I mean, but the, these are preliminary, right, so.
I get it, but we're going to have to get to a final number at some point. So I guess, the comment I would make is that the top line on the, the county general, I would like to see us target five point five million again, okay? Because with a lot of mandated mils that we have and the increase in value in both the county and the county forty-five valuations, you know, if, if you get a property tax statement at home and you're not eligible for the sixteen hundred dollar credit, I think we have to try to figure out a way of, of keeping those tax increases to a minimum.
Why, wouldn't you be eligible for the sixteen hundred dollar credit?
Because you didn't apply for it?
Bernie's bar down at the, at the Esquire is not eligible for the sixteen hundred dollar credit. Quarter of land for a farmer is not eligible for the sixteen hundred dollar credit. Right? So I think we should see if we can go through and, and continue to kind of do that, because we're going to get monies in other parts through the county, you know, road and organized and getting those kind of things, other dollars. So that would be a goal of, of mine, and I think it's easily, easily done, it's, it's achievable.
So you, just going back to your, going into the budget here, you've got a sum right here, sixty. So is that your proposal to stay?
No, I'm just making a comment, I'd, I'd like to see us to try to remain that flat.
So, u- under these, so, under the vector, what did you, you, the weed control, what did we say we put in that? Was that the county weed, that's three forty-one, six-sixty-nine, seventy-nine, right? Is that what was projected? Paul?
Well, it's, actually, yeah, that is the number. We did not, when we did originally, is we added three percent to the original amount that we, was approved in twenty-twenty-five, which was three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, and we added three percent of that, and that's what we initially proposed.
Which, which, which really isn't that far off.
No, it's not, and then you added the six thousand to that.
I added the homestead, yeah.
Yeah, which, that's, that's perfect, that three forty-one, six-six-nine, seventy-nine.
Okay.
That works, and then in the end, in that budget, I mean, we're eighteen hundred dollars to the good in our budget, weed, as proposed.
So in the county JDA, six hundred thousand? This is the second year at six hundred thousand? Previous to that was?
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred, so three years of six hundred thousand?
I want to say it's been four.
Four years?
Not quite, I think the other, the year prior to that was less. Five fifty or something.
Okay.
The, the, and I sit on that board so I can, so the, the part of the challenge is with the way a lot of these programs work is that the, the interest rate is purchased, is bought down by a partnership between the Bank of North Dakota and the local job development. And with the higher rate and, interest rate environment, those rates are being bought from six to two rather than two years ago when they were bought down from four to two, so it takes more dollars to get those projects rolling. The, the counter side to that is, that's been brought to my attention, is sometimes there is some equipment purchases that is financed through that. It's on a much shorter period of time, and not all existing companies use that, so.
And I, and I agree on that, because purchasing equipment, your cost for the operators of that equipment should be built into the.
Well, and not only that, but if it's a construction company, they might take that piece of equipment down to South Dakota and do a, a job. So I, I think that's, that's where the heartburn is, it is for me anyway, so.
And I could agree with you on that.
So just to answer your question, Corey, let's see, back in tax year twenty-twenty-three, which we're now looking at tax year twenty-twenty-five, so in twenty-twenty-three was the first year that they went from six hundred thousand, okay? Tax year twenty-twenty-three.
From five fifty?
From twenty-two, they were at five thirty-one. In twenty-one, they were at five hundred. And in twenty-twenty, they were at one ninety-nine, one ninety-two.
Wow. Okay. I think, I mean, looking at that one, and, and looking at that six hundred thousand, I mean, maybe it's just me, but I think we could probably back off of that some. And I know, year over year, everybody likes to go up or stay stagnant, nobody ever likes to go down. Is it up to me to make a decision on that, or? I would say, on that, if, if, maybe a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, so five hundred thousand.
You're making the motion to put them at five hundred?
That's a discussion.
For discussion, okay.
I can tell you that the, the equipment purchase, whatever you want to call it, buy downs are a lot less than a hundred, and there are some big projects on the horizon.
Okay.
We're in an environment, and everybody, I mean, those of you who, not, I'm talking generality, those of you who hate commerce, a lot of people do, basically fail to understand the environment, the competitive environment that commerce is in on a not only citywide, countywide, but a statewide basis. And you are, it, it's the nature of the beast. So I guess my only comment, I'm, I'm willing to propose something less than that. I would like to see us get one more year before hopefully the commercial, real estate or commercial interest rate market hopefully decreases to where that would cost less, so it doesn't have an effect on, on them. But if it's five hundred, it's five hundred, if it's five fifty, it's five fifty, but that's, that's my thought.
Could you potentially offer to do the six hundred?
It's our decision.
With, with the caveat that no equipment?
Well, so I, I don't think we could do, bind them, because the, this dollar actually goes to, to JDA, who then passes it through to Stark Development. And I don't know that we can put restriction, now, the city of Dickinson has put restricted funds on a portion of their contribution, but it goes and targets code, code upgrades. So if a property needs a sprinkler system or something, or new entries or something, they have set, they give, they give seven fifty, and then over and above the seven fifty, I believe, they give another hundred fifty thousand, which is specific to code.
And that's restricted.
That's restricted, I don't know exactly how we could restrict it, but if we could, I think that's a, a discussion. Because then they're going to go, well, you know, this, this project is using all Stark money, and then the next one is using mostly city money, and not, you know, like, if it is an equipment purchase. So that would be my only, and I don't know the technical aspects of it, but I think it would be a little bit of a challenge if we restrict those funds.
So Dickinson, city of Dickinson's nine hundred thousand, six hundred thousand from Stark? Wonder what this restricted is from the city of Dickinson?
That's the code enforcement ones.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'd be happy to put five fifty in there and let's move on to the next topic.
Let's do that, I'll propose five fifty.
Okay. Put in your little calculator. Vector control, I think that's just part of the, this year, they're probably underwater with all the.
They said they're very busy.
I can tell the mosquitoes are tracking me down, okay? Any comments on that, that one, I think we just kind of leave lay.
And you propose the general as five point five?
I do.
I just want to object, my spreadsheet as well.
So, how much money do we give like to Stark Development and JDA?
Six hundred.
Six hundred thousand?
Right.
Is what we have been giving them.
And we're proposing five fifty?
It's, it's, it goes to JDA and then it's passed through to Stark Development.
Okay, so, I mean, county road and bridge, you've got two point, two-four-nine-six, two point four-nine-six. I mean, we've got a pretty healthy balance we're sitting on there. Is that necessary to, to stay at that level?
I actually had discussions with Corey about that. I didn't know if you wanted to get into it at this meeting, since this is a preliminary one. But looking at the budget that was submitted with road and bridge and where their balances are, and with some of their flex funding coming in, and prairie dog funding and other things, that was actually one of them that I was suggesting reduce. We can't touch the unorganized or we lose our flex funding, but we can touch the ten mils that county road and bridge.
And I believe, just with what's, what we've had discussions with, we have a lot of good equipment, lot, I mean, everything we own is in excellent shape. I think that two point four can honestly, I think we could probably come off of that by three hundred thousand, pretty easily.
Okay, I would, let's put that in there, and we can always fine tune it when we go through the individual departments.
Just two point one, make it two point one? Or two point two?
Two point two.
Two point two?
Nice round numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so organized, we're going to leave at one-three-eight-one, one-twenty-seven. JDA is going to five fifty, vector, we're going to leave at one-fifty-five-seven. I'm going on consensus here, guys, so if there's something different than what. And then the jail projects, again, we're, we, do we use all that? Or I know there's some money.
It's not actual jail projects, what that, what that capital projects jail levy is, is the ten mils, but it's, it's your, if you go on your sheet and go, I know, it's a fun time, Bernie, you got to scroll over. Scroll over to the one that says jail.
County jail.
County jail, yep, so it's over a little bit, okay? So that's this budget right here. So your biggest expense coming out of there is going to be your board of prisoners. So that's what we're paying for inmates. I think they increased the cost, I want to say it's, we were at one fifty, now we're at one sixty a day for our inmates. Then we also have alcohol drug tests in there. That swim sea contribution is in there, and court cases is in there, and miscellaneous, which we didn't budget for miscellaneous before. We, we've kind of booted most things out of there because this budget was actually kind of upside down. So.
So in the jail. So in the jail number, you have 2496, but yet it looks like their proposed budget is 2804 or 2802, excuse me?
Yeah.
So we're underwater there, so if.
We've been underwater, yeah.
And we have a reserve of 2.2 there, so we could, we.
That's the balance, but you have to remember that, um, you know, we're, we're halfway through the year.
Okay.
And so we have another half a year.
So even if you take 300 off that, we're still, we could, we could.
No, not 300. We're probably another million off of that.
Oh, how, how can you be down 300 on an annual budget and then half the year lose another million?
So so far, what's come out of that budget this year is 1.2 million dollars.
Right.
Yes, and that's halfway through the year and that's halfway through the board of prisoners. So if our prisoner count stays where it's at, we're going to have another 1.2 coming out.
And we only budgeted 1.579 to go into that?
No, no, that's revenue. That's halfway, half a year revenue. We are going to have some more general property taxes.
Million dollars in the next six, five months on this deal.
No, we are going to have more general property taxes come in there.
But.
Yeah.
But I'm just talking the spending.
So is, are you, are we discussing the jail, right?
Yes, we are on the jail, yeah. On the jail. County jail.
Would anybody like moving that to 2.45 or 2.4 even?
Yeah, I think, um, that's reasonable.
Well, so we've got projected, these budget numbers came from Connie, right?
For projected?
Yes.
Yeah, it's looking at last year's, what Connie sent me and what we're looking at.
We're, we're projecting at 255.
Well, Connie sent me over, hers was a little bit lower. But every time she sends it over to me and it's lower, we always wind up way higher. So I don't want to put in that lower and then wind up at 25.
Yeah, I think there's confusion between what is being budgeted and levied and what is being budgeted and spent. And so what we're talking about in the, in the, these, uh, columns is what we would pro- uh, project to put into that particular general fund bucket, correct? As far as a levy, correct?
Yep, this is, this is your levy dollar amount.
Right. So if we levy 2.3 and we spend 2.8, for example, uh, we would have to pull approximately 500,000 out of the reserve that is for this particular.
Yes, but the reserve has been diminishing, so that's just a warning that.
It is our reserve.
Year end, what's, okay, since we can't agree, what's the year end estimated reserve for, for that line? It's going to be like 1.9?
It's gonna be probably about 1.7.
Okay.
Would be my guess.
Okay. All right, uh, let's keep going if I can get back to my first sheet. Do you have any others that we're looking at, uh, changing? What's that number look like? I know you guys, the math, spreadsheet gurus, I got that number down.
Which, for which, which one?
The, the whole, the right column all the way down, if we change to what we've talked about.
It's at 14.511.
Okay.
Soil conservation, I put an estimate of 1 mill. They've kind of been at 1 mill. I know the soil conference conservation overall is under a lot of pressure from the state to get the county's mills higher. Um, so that's an estimate. We're with Billings County on that.
So I'm fine with that. Medical one is dictated. We don't have any chance, choice on that one. Southwest District Health, again, you're pretty comfortable that that's going to be the number within, within a couple percent of that.
What gets us with Southwest District Health is, is kind of similar to our swim sea setup. We're the county and we have, I think there's either eight or nine counties. And whereas Stark County's valuation, when you're determining this off of valuations by adding all the counties together, well, Stark County's valuation for this year went up 20 million dollars. Whereas that 20 million dollars is more than the valuation of the entire county of Golden Valley, Valley, you know, in one year, so.
Yep, we, we take a disproportionate.
We are going to take a bigger share and that's where, she didn't go up in her budget. The reason why I went up on here is because of that value difference. Stark County is going to bear a grunt of basically more share.
And, and are you comfortable with the 800? Are you, or are you maybe even light on that number?
I don't think I'm light on the 800, no.
Okay, any others?
Just, I was just doing some math here.
The senior citizens one, um, we have done some work with them. They sent over their requests. I do have some questions for them. So the senior citizens mill, we send to our Stark County Council on Aging. The Stark County Council on Aging decides how to allocate those funds based on their requests that they're getting from senior citizens, um, senators and elder care and Southwest District Health. It's supposed to be senior related. The state does match 1 mill, but they put that 1 mill at a max of 200,836. So they say they match 1 mill, but if our mill is worth 249, they're actually only matching up to 20836. Um, so we send them our, the amount that we levy for Stark County, which is historically has been 1 mill. And then I also do the paperwork to send them their state 1 mill match, which max at 20836. And then we also give them some of our oil and gas money.
So County Road and Bridge will be around 1.5 at 17?
At 17.
Unorganized, County Road.
I'm sorry, County and Road, unorganized. You said.
Uh, when I do the calculation for that, it's seven, it's going to be at, for mills, you mean?
Yes.
It's going to wind up at like 17.4.
Okay.
And max is 18?
18, but we can't get to 18, which is why we have to divide our county in half. And I get to do 17.4 on my reporting and 17.4 on half the other valuations.
Okay.
Cause the state treasurer's office decided they'd add those two amounts together to make sure we're over 18.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
But that amount of 1381, 127 would be at 17.4 mills. For the entire county.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't include cities now. Unorganized does not include cities. So the one that you're looking at reducing, the County Road and Bridge, is the entire county.
Okay. Any other, so if I add, I get 14, 311, 320 or am I off?
For which one?
On the, on F, F4 through 16 as a.
I have 14, 511, 320, 42.
What, what number did you put under the jail projects, capital projects?
Yeah, well, I have 2.4.
2.4, I'm sorry, I, I put in 2.2. All right, so at 14, 511, 320, 42.
Correct.
Got it, okay. All right. Any heartburn on those numbers? Okay.
Do you want me to go over them just to make sure we're all on the same page?
Might as well.
Okay. One second. Make them easier to read here. Okay, so I have county general at 5.5 million. County Road and Bridge at 2.2 million. County Road Unorganized at 1.381, 127. County Library at 343,000. County Airport at 91,000. County Weed at 341,66979. I have the JDA at 550. Vector Control at 155, 720. Capital Projects Jail at 2.4 million. Soil Conservation at 249,600. Senior Citizens at 1 mill or 249,600. Southwest District Health, 800. And State Medical at 249, 60363.
On the soils conservation, was there that estimate that you have? Can you explain that one more time, that 249,600?
That, we historically give soil conservation 1 mill.
Okay.
Yep, and so 249,600 is basically what our 1 mill is going to be worth.
Grand total again?
14,511, 320.42.
Make sure that matches. Yep.
Okay.
Now, these are the numbers that if you guys set at the, this amount, we cannot go.
Over.
Above for the final.
I think it makes us do a little work, which isn't all that bad. Okay, so do you, do you need a formal?
Yes, approval, and you could just approve the 14 overall.
Okay.
For tax, 2025 tax year.
Okay. Anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion of, uh, the amount, the 2025 amount proposed for 14.511, 320.42.
Okay, by Commissioner White, any second?
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Claris, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh. And Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, so then do you want to have any discussion on preliminary, uh, recommended budgets?
So I do have to have a viewable preliminary budget available if somebody wants to come look at it.
Okay.
Um, by the 10th.
Okay.
And it has to be approved. So that's why I suggest you go through and pick out anything. You don't have to do each department. If, if you have questions on what I've sent you, um, we can adjust some of that. And, um, that's what's gonna, this would be your approved preliminary budget for viewing.
Okay. Okay, so well, let's start at the top. Or do we want to start at the bottom? It's always fun to start at W rather than governing board, but, uh, for the sake of simplicity, we'll start with the.
Which, or which report you guys on?
We're on the spreadsheets.
The workbook.
About the fourth, fifth one over.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't keeping up.
Okay. Comments on governing board? Was that really a 0%, raise from last year, correct? Change?
So I put in a 3%.
But I mean, the 25 from 24 was 0, correct?
Great, it was 0.
Yep, 24 was 0, 25 was 0.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
All right. Any comments? We'll, we'll try to muscle through these guys. Um, so if you have comments or heartburn, um, we should make those comments now so we can, because we'll be coming back, uh.
Many more discussions.
Yes, so we have more discussions. Okay, hearing none. I'll take that as a sign we move on. So we'll move to HR. So here is one where the, we developed this matrix and merit and all these other good things. And you're asking for additional money for the tuition reimbursement? Minor $1,000, I guess.
I think it's just to, isn't that just to match up with our policy? Cause you have 3,000 or 1,500 per semester, so.
Yeah, you asked for 5,024, 5,000 again, same.
And then 26, I'm at 6,000 because if you had two people ask, right?
Okay.
So I think it was just adjusting to what our policy was.
And then line 10, we still have to address that at some point, correct?
The, which one?
Longevity?
Yeah. Well, I, I, I think, overall, I think, uh, again, it's an annual discussion. I think, uh, uh, compensation is always a fun discussion point.
That's awesome.
So, uh, I think that we need to do that individually, collectively, so, um.
Every single budget is following the merit, um, and step program.
As proposed? I mean, this, so every department that submitted a, a proposed budget, it falls in compliance with what?
With a, with either a merit or it's, it falls within the merit or step program.
Of what we passed in July 17th.
Yes, yes. The only one that did propose something a little different was the Sheriff's Department.
No.
Shocked, I'm shocked. So it's merit plus market is built in this, just, or just merit?
Merit or the matrix?
Merit, well, it's our, it's the whole policy in general, the, the matrix with the merit. Some people have steps, so if they, if they didn't have any valuation, I'm, um, like, I don't think any of the state's attorneys, um, or the staff had any valuation. So they just have a step, they don't have a, they're not in the, the matrix with evaluations.
So, so with the change of this matrix and the merit and everything, are we going to eliminate longevity then or what?
That's the discussion we need to have yet. And if, uh, do we, do the, do we do that now or? I mean, it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, so we got, so we got the steps and then the step increases, so I think we should eliminate the longevity.
Mm-hmm, I have to agree with you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I have motion to, starting January 1, 2026, to eliminate longevity from the compensation package and seconded by Bernie, Mr. Marsh, Commissioner Marsh. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
I gotta see Todd's face because he's one of the biggest longevity ones.
So up to, up to this point though, they keep their longevity in that.
True end of, of.
So they'll get a payout.
Get 25's longevity, but they won't get longevity in 26.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. So I mean, whatever he's earned up to this point is still his.
Correct.
Okay, anything else on, comments on HR? Spin the wheel? Oh, it ends on auditor. Uh, auditor's next.
Mine's pretty easy this year. So the only thing I'm asking is for, and it falls within our. Mine's pretty easy this year, so the only thing I'm asking is for, and it falls within our step and merit program, I started out Charlotte very low, coming in, and now she's been with us for, you know, she made it through presidential election and this year, and I just wanna take her up to step eight, because she's, she was in the very bottom 15 percentile coming in, and, you know, this is kind of the sheriff's fault, because he put that job opening at 20 something dollars an hour, and she's seen it, and she was gonna try to run away from me to the sheriff's department.
Should've taken the job.
So, I just wanna put her in line with reason.
Any comments on that?
So what does that put, I mean, she's on an hourly, hourly, oh, she's on a salary?
Nope.
Nope, she's hourly.
And she was
She would move to step eight, so I think it's, here, I'll do it real quick.
Does, was she hired this fiscal year?
Last year.
Last year.
Okay.
August.
Yep, and I, I did bring her in, like I said, very low, and then she did get a raise this year, well, for 2026, when we did the budget last year, and then for 2026, I would just like to put her in at 25, which is a step eight in our compensation pa, policy. So I wanna say it moves her to the 35th percentile.
So she's in a step seven, you said?
No, she's farther down than that, yeah.
That is a big bump for one, with one year with the county, so two steps, three steps?
Well, she was only brought in at like $21 an hour.
Was there a reason for that then, or, that we brought her in at 21?
Because I was looking to, well, I don't know, I was trying to follow your compensation of paying people lower, bringing them on, and so I don't wanna go in reverse and punish her for being brought in at 21.
I'm just saying that's a big jump for one year, and I, and I can see it, but I was just kinda curious why if, I don't know.
Because now she's being trained, and the, she's been with the auditor's office for a while, and she's doing elections, and she's getting yelled at for property taxes, and
Nobody yells at anybody around here.
And I just, we need a fairly compensator, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I would suggest anybody who has line item questions or comments, write it down, and we can have further discussions, so but we'll, at this point, we'll move out of, unless there's, move out of the auditor, move into planner. So the question I have on this one, because it's one of those shared positions with the city, we're budgeting, I mean, is the county matching whatever we do in this situation, or are they just reimbursing us for half?
They're reversing that, so that, where, where you see that it's higher is because they also reverse us for half the benefits and stuff as well.
But the point I'm making is if, if that position, we decided all of a sudden it was a 20% increase, they would still pay for their half of the 20%.
As far as I know, they haven't said anything differently.
So the reimbursement expense then from the city at 63,000, we're saying the cost of that position is 126,000, right? Because 91, 90
Yeah, you have to include the benefits.
90,000 plus benefits.
And the FICA and everything else.
Okay. So I'm still back, on that one, I'm still back to my comment, is it underutilized, so, but. Okay.
I agree.
State's attorney.
I've got a couple yellow marks on mine. One of my legal secretaries is, needs to go part-time, which will then necessitate the need for me to fi, hire a new full-time person, frankly, we could use another full-time person anyways. So you'll see a legal assistant new at 60,000, that's just kind of my estimate, I, I, that would be obviously depending on experience, and then I bumped, I would like to bump Ayana just a little bit more than where she was originally at. Just, the raise was really low, she works really hard, especially if we gotta start training in someone new, or in the event that I don't even get any applicants, I, I don't know what kind of job market is out there for legal secretaries, I know some people, I know other, other offices looking for them and having some, some problems, and it's not easy to train in a legal secretary, I can tell you that. And then, I think that's it, we had some interns this, this year, and it worked out really, really well for our office, and so I just asked for $10,000 to budget for interns for the year.
So you said one of yours assistants, paralegals is going to potentially cut down on time, part-time?
Add to 20 hours, so it's, in there is a full-time position right now, salaried that way.
Okay, that was my question.
I shouldn't say that, I shouldn't say salaried, but that's what the budget is right now.
Okay.
Because I'd rather have it in there, and then be prepared in the event something happens.
Okay, so the, the column reflects a, a, a full-time position, even though it may end up going part-time?
Correct.
All right. Any comments, questions on that one? Okay, move on to recorder. She's adding 500 for the
For travel?
For travel, other than that, it's step and ma, merit, correct?
Yep.
All right. Director of tax equalization.
I think she did come back with the final number for that, I have just kind of side there, if we're gonna do a reappraisal contract, if we wanted to start putting funds aside for that project, I wanna say it came back at 900 and something thousand, I, I know I pinged 1.1 million because she was unsure.
Yep.
But other than that, there's nothing unusual about that.
I think the reappraisal contract is another discussion.
Okay.
And I have visited with Natalie about it, so she knows how, how I feel. I think we can move into 26 with, without putting a reserve into that effect.
Okay.
I just don't think we have to fix something that isn't broken, so.
It's just a note that we know too.
Yep, no, it's, it's valid, I understand that, so. Okay, elections, election year 2026.
In terms of?
So election year 2026, obviously not a presidential, so it's not, doesn't need as much money in that budget. I know the state's attorney's office has mentioned in the past about updating our JPAs. I do have actual JPA examples from other counties, so I will be updating our JPAs with the cities and the schools this year. So if you, on the revenue side of things, I know it's not listed on here, but on the revenue side, we will have the schools and cities responsible for paying a little more cost in the election, and that includes putting in the JPA contract, that if their city or school triggers a recount, that they have to pay for the recount.
And, and you're anticipating, again, no rent being needed, using public facilities or the mall or whatever it is?
I mean, I should be able to cover that in this budget.
Okay.
So, it's not as busy when it's not presidential, so we still plan on having two locations in Dickinson, and then one in, in Richerton, and one in Bellfield, so.
All right. Public safety. So you've, just for clarification, you've taken the sheriff's proposed budget and put it in the spreadsheet?
So in line K, column K, that is the proposed merit and step, if, if it was just using the regular merit and step program that you all just voted into place. Column L is what the sheriff proposed, and then column M is what he proposed, put into our merit and step program, and then off to N shows what those increases are beyond the merit.
Or tw, for li, M, correct?
M is his
So M is for beyond K, right?
Yes.
Okay.
M is going off of what he proposed in L, which is his, his, what he's proposing. M is put into our ma, matrix, but it's above what the normal matrix would be.
They just didn't have a fancy header like the rest of them.
Mm-hmm.
Turned me off there.
If, and if you guys could keep in mind, please, that we eliminated the $30,000 of differential pay.
Differential pay from nighttime to daytime?
But all, all deputies participated in that, all?
The ones that worked 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
But all of them do, not when you put them on rotation, or no?
No, the civil division, detectives, patrol, yes.
Very, that's my question. Okay, comments, questions?
Is this your third revision?
It's probably my 13th revision, but
Third one you've shared with us?
Second, second or third, I thought it was the second.
Okay. Buildings and grounds.
It's weird that the was it 6B? Already has a name assigned to it?
That was my fault.
Hey, we're quick, we're right on top of it, this is day of, day of electronics, you know, you can really be fast.
I typed it in there, I mean, it's one less thing I have to remember to do later. So. For building and grounds, I actually filled in most of that budget.
Yeah.
Just based on last year's amounts, and then looking at where we're at, because they don't have a department head right now, and, so. If you have any questions about the amounts, you're welcome to ask me, because I typed them in there.
Salary and gross, is that the corrected, all there 55,000?
Yeah, Fiedler was higher. The salary stuff I got from Joetta.
Okay, LEC maintenance. Mostly variable costs, looks like to me. Tough to get a furnace mad at you when you cut their budget. Maybe they just quit and don't run during the middle of the winter. Any questions there? If not, we can disaster emergency services.
There is a little note on that one from Elena on Brad's. We did kind of move around some percentages a little bit, so Elena is 100% out of disaster emergency services with, which is a general fund budget, Brad is at 50%.
So he took on the 911 coordinator role?
No, uh, yeah, to claim 100% of my budget, on EMPG, I would have to take 911 coordinator off my title.
Wow, that's interesting.
Can you say that again?
So currently I have emergency manager and 911 coordinator, in order to claim that with the state level with EMPG, which is where they reimburse some of my salary, I have to remove that off my title, I can't do that job anymore, so I've moved that to Brad's position.
To Brad, and that's, what percentages of your, were they paying before?
They pay up to 40% of my salary, so when we did it before, we were, when I started, it was 80/20, and last year we moved it to 90/10, so my hope is to claim 100%, so we get a little bit more reimbursement.
Okay.
Just, just a title.
Same work.
Adjustment.
Yeah, a little bit.
You help, yeah.
We, yeah, we dual-roll everything, so, and then when our office specialist, Jolynn, plans on retiring, Brad's gonna be taking over those responsibilities, so that kind of falls into the 911 coordinator role, so it's kind of preemptively setting him up for that job responsibility too, so, just getting ahead of it.
Is she retiring this soon, or?
She's kind of, let me know maybe around March-ish, but, we'll see.
Have we added a dis, no, we haven't, dispatchers were still at the same number, it's just
Well, it's bigger, it's more this year's, I was just gonna mention, it's 20,000 extra, which we hope that actually covers it.
I, yeah.
That's where we reimburse the city, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's split in half from the agreement, so we pay the half, and then the half comes out of the 911 fees that we pull into, and that is, that's what they're projecting, because they are anticipating hiring two more dispatchers, and I confirmed with Lieutenant Hannel that that is what we're looking at.
One, one thing we should talk about, I sat in on a meeting at, through the 911 on the state level, I mean, you could adjust your fee for the 911.
We would have to take it to a vote, and if it doesn't pass, which it hasn't passed in, previously, you guys could pass it as well, but it has to go
It failed the last time it went on the ballot?
Mm-hmm, I heard fairly badly.
Really?
Mm-hmm, I think we will have to up it, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, based on the way, I mean, just, it's an opportunity to get kind of reimbursed for actual efforts and what you're doing.
And I mean, cost of equipment and staffing isn't getting cheaper, so I mean, we do have to keep up with it, so.
Okay, I mean, even if you go up 25 cents or whatever it is.
I think we could go up 50.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna look at doing it, I think it's just gonna take a big educational push to the community, it sounds like maybe last time, that's why it failed, no one really knew what it was for, and and then just taking, kind of moving our salaries around is kind of helping with that 911 budget too.
Okay. So we're rolling into 911.
It's, there's nothing out of the ordinary for 911, other than putting over the percentage change.
Yeah, so the dispatchers also show up in this line as well? So our, our cost is 440, or is it?
It's 440 total, and then we split it between the two, because the 911 budget could not sustain under 440, we probably pull in about 360.
Okay, so the dispatcher budget totally encompassing up there is 880, and then we pay 440, 220 through 911, 220 through EMM?
Yeah, we're paying dispatchers both through the, the 911, and then the EMM, which is the general fund budget.
Yeah.
We are also paying out of two.
But that's 50% of the total all cost of operating the
No, we pay 40% of their costs.
So it's actually 60%?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, okay, thank you. Okay, IT.
So IT, I helped structure that a little differently, there was a little confusion, because there is stuff in the IT budget that is not under, well, the budget wasn't built for a department head to begin with, and it wasn't under that specific department head, it's actually software from other departments. So I restructured his budget, so that way he could see, and the IT committee could see, the stuff up top. So I restructured his budget, so that way he could see, and the IT committee could see, the stuff up top. Is stuff that the IT department has control over, those individual lines, and you'll see notes to the right. The stuff on bottom are also IT expenses, and they belong in the IT budget, but they're nothing that Jeremiah. As a department head has control over because, like, for example, the recorder's office is the one that designates. The Eagle Recorder Tyler invoices to be paid. I sign off on my ARCA search and my Tyler Technologies maintenance, these aren't. These are department head, other departments, yeah, that are in charge of those.
So were those expenses previously, uh, in those departments, so that Tyler Technology, was that previously? Was that ever in?
I don't know, Tyler Technology was, I know some of the, some of them were. In individual department budgets, and then we moved them over to IT.
Okay, well, so the one I would be familiar, obviously, is Vanguard, did you ever have Vanguard under your line?
I have never had it, it's always been under IT.
Got it. Okay.
One question I have is the reserve other departments, five thousand dollars overage.
So IT, IT always has a reserve.
Okay.
Um, I moved.
Just couldn't, unforeseen, didn't capture.
I put five thousand down in here because if something comes back. As, you know. A thousand dollars more for the year, because some of these are big amounts, like our maintenance contracts comes back, that's an estimate, right, eighty thousand? If it comes back at eighty-one, then I have a thousand that I can cover that overage.
Okay.
Without costing him money out of his budget. Which he didn't cost any money out of his budget because normally his, his reserve is forty thousand. But that's what the reserve was meant for, was for unforeseen costs.
Okay. County Park.
Oh, I just realized Lisa's not here, so I just went through and added line numbers. She did at one time have everything under that, um, County Park eight-one-six number you see there, it's in red. Um, it's hard when you pull reports, when somebody asks, how much did we spend on? Maintenance and repairs or park events, you're getting all of our expenses for the entire year. Um, so we did, are gonna create our fund lines if the commission is okay with that, and so if you ask for something specific. You're not getting all expenses.
Well, I think the, so the, the s- equipment slash community, no, not community events, but. Uh, park events, you know, we, we, we've kind of juggled that num- number back and forth, and it's not that I disagree or agree with it, I've just. Wanted to know the explanation on it, and well, there'll be plenty of opportunities to get that, uh, that's the only thing that jumps out at me, so.
Equipment slash?
Oh, we, we, we had twenty, we, we had zero in equipment two years ago, then we went to twenty, and then we went to fifty, but then park events went from. One-twenty to one-seventy, we did a merger of those last year, if I remember right, we did something, I'd be honest with you, I can't quite remember.
We did a merger of community events. You see where it says community events in red, and then a little dash combined is because we combined that dollar amount for.
Between those two, got it, okay.
Between two of them, yeah.
So. Is she reducing that then, asking for that?
She's getting rid of that community events line, and then she's gonna have a fair and park events line.
Okay, but if those.
But those are the dollar amounts.
Yeah.
She's going from one-seventy to one-twenty.
Okay, okay. County Road combined.
Did we go back to park though?
Sure.
Is this where we have our conversation about the Fair Association and the Park Board?
Yeah, I would certainly like to see that, and I think Bernie's gonna take it too, you have a meeting next week, you said?
I think on the thirteenth, we got our, our meeting for budget.
Okay. So, uh, I guess, so just to follow up on the previous comment was, you know, is, if. I'd hate to see that just go stagnant, that conversation, so if we could, you know, figure out how to keep a dialogue going, I would look.
Oh, it's on the fourteenth.
Okay. Okay. Answer your question there?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, County Road combined.
So this is all of County Road, and so it has everything in there for County Road. Um, we have County Road and Organized now, we do have to have their own fund lines, see how much is coming in from. You know, our County Road and Organized levy, which we can now, since you guys lowered that, we will change that. From what I have here as the proposed, oh, you didn't change that one.
Yeah.
You didn't change that one, you, you changed the regular County Road one.
Right, not.
Not combined.
Right.
Yeah.
Whatever you had in there.
So there's Unorganized County Road, um, Highway Distribution Funds, um, Highway Tax Distribution from the state. Those are their big ones for County Road.
I'll just, if, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the Highway Distribution from the state, do they have a formula for projecting that? Just because we're going based on previous, uh, increases that.
They sent me those projections.
Got it, so that is off of a state projection?
Well, it's from NDACO, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And then, um, that Prairie Dog funding line, that's what we're supposed to be getting from Prairie Dog funding. Is one point one-three million. And then, um, telecommunications lines like that, I just fill in. Um. We. For, let's see here, um, another account besides this County Road combined is. Your Roads Special Projects Fund that you guys created and started putting, um, state aid in it. And that balance as of July second was at six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And yet again, I don't have anything for, other than that being a savings account of what those funds are supposed to be used for.
That's for when oil hits thirty bucks.
I'll put that in the notes.
Um, well, that was the intent, so that we could continue service without, so. I had a questions, how did we, in the? Twenty-twenty, boy, what year is this, twenty-twenty-five, so how did we in twenty-twenty-four? Uh, I don't know when you got reimbursed with Flex Transportation, uh, bypass monies. Did that just go into one specific project in and out versus a generality of? Because we had each, you know, we had fifteen oh-five, which we, uh, did part of the paving with up there on the bypass.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you have that line itemed here, but we, where would the, where that flex funding came in, where's that referenced? Or did, does it need to be referenced?
Where the flex funding came in?
Yeah, does it need to, I mean.
I would say, let me see here.
Or did you just have a special project and put that in there and then took all the expenses?
I sure didn't, so let me see, one sec, twenty-five, was that in twenty-four?
Well, we had the opening about a year ago, right?
Yep, it's right about this time.
About this time.
Yes.
So I think we got it in, and it was just part of the balance that came over, because you remember I combined all three.
So it came.
So we prob- it probably came in at the end of twenty-four, didn't it?
I don't know.
Does that sound right?
Pay for the bypass road?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that money came into a fund, and then we paid it into a line item, that's not, I don't, I don't.
Got it.
That, that went away in our twenty-five, but we combined them, right? It came over in our total balance.
Under a special.
Our starting balance is what it came over in, it wasn't a special project, we just went from three budgets to one.
Okay.
That was last year.
But would of the expenses, would of the expenses regarding that project be referenced here as well, probably not, if you, if you had this over here?
No, because part of those expenses probably also. Showed up under the Prairie Dog line, there's a Prairie Dog expense line too, so I think the income came in. Flex income line, and then the expenses were just.
Yeah.
Didn't bring line to hand that.
Okay.
Yeah, we had an expense and a revenue line for Prairie Dog, but then we had to move the balances over. When we combined all of this for twenty-five. So I was combining a lot of lines, is what I'm saying, so if it matched in one department, I moved it over and combined it to get a total. Which is partly why you see where we ended, right, where we, twenty-twenty-four approved budget. You kind of see revenues that came in.
Yep.
Twenty-twenty-four actuals.
Yep.
You see that thirteen million, because you see that Prairie Dog funding right there.
Yep.
Six point three.
Got it. So I guess the question I would have, just again, so. Where do we expect to be twenty-twenty-five actual on? You know, we're at four-four revenue, year-to-date.
Three point eight.
Three point eight expenses, the approved numbers are seven million on the res- on the revenue side, and eight-eight on the expense side. Um, are those gonna be fairly close?
Well, highway tax is pretty con- consistent, I would say.
That's monthly, right?
Um, yeah, and we're at one point four of that. So my budget probably isn't too far off there, um, the other ones that are gonna be close, state aid distribution. I mean, we're at eighty thousand, I budgeted one-sixty, and that's been pretty consistent month to month. Um, we should have some more property tax coming in. Um. We're not quite at our final time for that yet, so we do have some second half payments coming in.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Road superintendent position, I'd still have a blank there, but for salaries, so.
Yeah, we haven't had any discussions about additional headcount at this point.
Okay, anything else?
I think we're gonna have to decide something dollar amount in there, I guess, too, if we're gonna.
I, yeah, I think that's your plan, isn't it, Cory? Okay.
Plan is what, to add a salary in there, because there's nothing there now.
Well, we can, we, we can put in, and we can start with what, uh. I think we carry over for. One-ten, we can probably put in there. If you, if that's fine, Karen?
I mean, I can definitely add it in there.
It, it, it may not be there, but I mean, I think that's a safe number.
In Al's line?
Yes.
One-ten, you said?
Correct.
Okay. I'll highlight it then, because I'll have to reflect it in all the other lines too then.
So is the intent to fill that position, or to operate the, the way you're doing it and, and elevate, elevate internally, or what's your?
I, I, I don't know yet, we're gonna have to have those discussions, but, I mean, uh, I do not. See budgeting for another additional headcount either. With what we have.
Okay.
That should be our compensation for our current acting road superintendent too. Since I took away his big longevity.
That's why when you said that, I looked at Todd.
Well, again, I think we have until October fourth to determine that, so I think we can address those issues. Equitably.
You're not talking about longevity, are you?
No.
Because I'm gonna go in and take out the columns.
And then I'll call you tomorrow and say, put it back in. Okay. Capital improvements.
I just put a million-dollar marker there for the lovely LEC.
Okay, we've pretty much gone over the county jails, so I think we don't need to see that one again. The emergency fund, uh, it's a tight one, gone from nine-oh-seven to nine-ten.
Okay, it's consistently nine-oh-seven, but I put nine-ten in case I'm off by a couple pennies, and then we have to address it in the meeting, so.
Waste within government, I guess.
There is your fund balance though, which is good to know, um, for your emergency account.
Yep. And Veteran Service Office.
So I did put some notes in there for the Veteran Services, um. Because we, based on what I'm looking at and what are, where our balance is. And, you know, we're not really receiving revenues other than co-compensations into there, we're probably gonna have to start. Mill levying for Veteran Service Office as early as twenty-twenty-six, we might be able to get through to twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay.
But that's just a note.
So the, the, the regional counties that we do service, is that just an annual contract? Did we sign longer than that, what's, you, what's the agreement there?
I don't know if it's annual, but we're, I think it's until it's canceled.
Okay.
Last time I checked.
It was ongoing.
Just on, just on.
Unless it's changed or.
Okay.
Shoot, yeah.
All right, any other questions on that one? County Agent.
Kurtz is pretty easy.
Yeah.
Um, we will not need to be milling for that anytime soon, and. You know, we probably got a couple, I would say maybe three, three years before we need to start looking at that. Um, his balance, one point zero-five-nine. I mean, the, the problem that he has is that, like, Billings County is no longer paying into that fund. He's really not collecting any revenue funds, so it's, it's all eating at his balance.
Right.
So, when he gets down to. That mark of like one year, that's when we need to start remilling for that.
And that's been the intent anyway, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Weed. Kosha.
Lots of it. I would, uh, the only comment I have is just a heads up, I mean, we haven't officially, but we're moving towards. I mean, cost share has been at seventy-thirty, right, and we're gonna move that up to landowner paying thirty-five percent going forward. I mean, chemical costs, I mean, we're talking, we're, we think they're gonna marry up over twenty percent for, for this year, so. Um, I mean. We're gonna pass along some of those costs to the, to the operators this year. And that hasn't been officially, but that was been, that was a big discussion at our Weed Board, uh, meeting.
You might want to ask him, because I want to say in twenty-one, because Weed was kind of underwater, we did up the cost share then.
I think at one time it was fifty-fifty, and then we went to seventy-thirty. Um, but now we're going sixty-five, thirty-five.
Okay.
Yeah. And some of the reason on that chemical side, I mean, there's been a movement away from, on the noxious side. Everybody's been using Toridon and two, two-forty for years and years and years, and there's some new chemicals out there that are. Little bit more effective, but they're more costly as well. And there, and there's a, there is a wave moving towards those chemical. Those new chemicals.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Victim Witness.
Um, nothing crazy about her budget, we do have to still transfer money in from the general for Victim Witness.
Okay. Yeah.
And she would be on step seventeen of her payls, pay scale.
And we still have an intern in there. I don't think, was there a conversation about a part-time going there?
Yeah, at one point, but I think we're trying to see if we can utilize some interns and see. and see if the federal funding and some of those other things looks like.
Okay.
I think that went as smooth as it could.
I'm really curious to see how it all works at the end.
All right.
Was there anything that you wanted me to take out?
On, on the contribution ones?
Yeah.
Let's leave that till next.
So leave it as-is for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think we're gonna get a couple requests in and then I think some individuals would like to do their own research on some of these to.
So once I update the revenue side here in the sheets, you want me, can you approve the preliminary budget as presented with the, with the approved amounts?
I think we can.
Yeah.
Board, what do you think?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
I'd like a motion of that.
So I'd make, I'd make the motion to present.
Commissioner White, do we have a second?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Claris, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passed. Anything else to come before our illustrious board?
Is that one more thing on your agenda?
Oh, yes, public comments. Seeing none, hearing none. We will close the public comment period. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, thank you.